Good evening. At 6:04 PM, September 9, 2021, Laguna Beach Unified School Board Open Sessions Called to Order. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, you need to be masked. You need to be masked to be in here. So everyone needs to put on a mask in order to attend this meeting. Okay. Can we have our officer walk up here, please? You have to wear a mask. You need to put on a mask. Yeah. Okay, sir, you need to put on a mask or you can't be in the meeting. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to move to be on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Isabel, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to C on the agenda, the report on closed session. There was no report out of closed session. And this moves us to 4D adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bor, are there any changes on the agenda tonight?
I just would recommend for board consideration, just because I know the item, I'm sure there's more speakers here, that we move 12A up behind number eight and make it nine.
Part of seven for public hearing, too?
No, I would do the public hearings through the information item on instruction, suicide prevention. So it'd become number nine. It's totally would become number nine.
I moved to move action item 12, consideration of baseline COVID testing for all students to follow item eight, information items of instruction.
So for clarification, is that adoption of the agenda with that change or is it a separate motion?
It's a motion.
Victoria, can you please conduct, sorry, can you please conduct a board member roll call? Starting with the student, personal vote, please.
Isabella?
Present.
Thank you. Member Vickers? Member Kelly? Member Perry? Clerk Osborne? President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries five zero. We're going to number five A.
Do we need to use the microphone for the recording? Or can we just do what we've been doing with being loud, Victoria? We have to use the microphone. Okay, thank you.
So five A is public comment, non-agenda items. So this will be something that's not on the agenda. While Clerk Osborne looks through what those are, I'm just going to quickly go over. LBSD public comment forum closed today at noon with 18 total comments, 16 on 12A and two on 8A. In addition to that, noted on the agenda, you'll see opportunity for live public comment for closed session, non-agenda public comments, which we're now, and for each action item and public hearing. I'll provide the opportunity for the public to testify. Public comments tonight will be accepted by those attending in person who wish to speak. Public comment speaking cards are located in the back. And then please turn them in and we'll get them to the clerk so that she can call you. On the front, fill out what agenda item or items you'd like to speak to. And if you prefer not to provide a name, just make sure you provide some unique identifiers so the clerk can call upon you. And then once you are called upon, come on to the podium, which is over here. And when you start to speak, they'll start your timer of three minutes. We'll leave the procedures for public comment upon the, can we leave them up there? And so we do a total of 20 minutes of speaking on any item. And then the board can vote to extend that. And then with that, Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaking cards for those who wish to speak on comments not on the agenda?
I have. I have four cards. And so I'll just call your name and the topic that you wish to speak on. Again, these are on item five, items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. I'd like to call up first Mesrop on the topic of automated disinfection for schools. You can come on up to the podium. And up next will be Leonard Olds, just to be ready.
Hello, members of the board. I've learned that there is a different process that I have to take to inform you about what I'm about to talk about. But I figured I can just tell you a little bit about it while doing the process by going to the superintendent and they'll bring it to you. This is about automated disinfection for schools. So I feel it's very important to not rely on spraying chemicals in the classrooms and not rely solely on janitorial crews because there's so much surfaces and they all need to be disinfected every single night. So we found the solution and this is the first time I'm going to a district meeting. And I plan to go to all the districts and tell them that there is a solution. It's an automated disinfection. It's lights that get installed at the classrooms. And when the students leave and everybody leaves at 1:30 AM, the lights turn on, disinfect the whole school. And the next morning, it's clean for all the students to come. So this will be quick because I'll go through the right process, but that's all. And those brochures are just so you could see what they look like when we're in eight schools already. And I plan to be in a lot more. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment. And next, Leonard Olds, speaking on the topic, education elements. And following that will be Rod Tippel.
No. No. Okay, then we'll just go ahead. My name is Leonard Olds and I'm here to speak tonight on education elements. Last month, on August 19th, I attended by Zoom call the meeting of this board. And the following day, I wrote an email to four of the board members who are presently here, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Normandin, Sosborn and Ms. Vickers. And I heard back nothing from them after that email. The point that I had made in that email was the following. Of the 15 biographies available on education elements, all of them were totally unimpressive as people that should be hired to do anything with our students. I read every one of them and there was nothing there that I thought was special at all. Then I talked about the future of education elements. Personally, I hope that you'll end them. I know you've hired them. You spent a quarter of a million dollars. But what I've seen, I don't understand for a moment what it adds to anything to the students of Laguna Beach. Keep critical race theory out of the schools. Continue your board responsibilities. That's reading, writing and arithmetic. Stay out of the politicization of our schools. Parents can control their children's destiny. They don't need anybody else to do it for them. A watchdog group has been formed in Laguna Beach, composed of community members and parents of students who will be watching everything that has to do with education elements. I'd like to give you a quote from your own district. It says, "Challenge success partners with schools, families and communities to embrace," here we go, "a broad definition of success and to implement research-based strategies that promote student well-being, equity and engagement with learning." I have no understanding of what the term equity means when you use that with education elements. We'd like to know if you've implemented anything so far curriculum-wise, staff development, or anything in the schools with its students with education elements. And if so, we would like to see them published, and I'll get to that in a few moments. I will send another email tomorrow to the four of you and hope that I have a reaction this time. There are two current problems for education in California, which will be coming up in the future. One is the change of admission policies at the University of California campuses, which within three years will be using quote-unquote "other criteria" for admission. If you've been following this across the nation, I live in two other states, Pennsylvania and Florida, as well as California. You will know that this is one of the most divisive features of admissions to schools. And as an investment banker, I can tell you this. If they go ahead with that kind of process, those of us that have businesses across the country will not hire graduates from California and certainly not the UC system.
That's three minutes.
That's it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod Tippel. Thank you. And following Rod will be Clay Leeds. Thank you very much.
Responding to speakers is out of order. We ourselves are not to respond to the speakers under the Open Meeting Act and the audience. The audience needs to not clap or respond to the speakers that way. Thank you.
I'm Rod Tippel, a parent, a son, grandson, great-grandson of California public school teachers and a veteran. First, I empathize with many parents who may consider speaking, but who feel the risks of speaking out. Given this, we can appreciate how our children must feel about speaking freely in school systems across the country today. There is no place for racism in our community. Each of us has a responsibility to speak out whenever we observe violations of our rights as protected in the First Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection, and Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. We do this to honor the principles and ideas that built the foundation of our republic, however imperfect our history. In reading materials from education elements, the anti-racism consultants, some observations. These materials used to train our teachers and our children are from a lineage of ideas that stand in principled opposition to the ideas embedded in the founding documents of our country, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. They are in principled opposition to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who famously spoke to his dream for his children that they may one day, quote, "live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character," unquote. These materials speak to a race-based collective guilt and shame. They are in fact fundamentally racist. Their ideas have deep origins among the class-based ideologies of this nation's most strategic adversaries. Courageous people today are speaking out against transformation of our nation's schools into indoctrination camps, which they've become. They include a refugee from Mao's Chinese Cultural Revolution that destroyed a 5,000-year-old civilization and murdered tens of millions of people. Shivon Fleet is her name, and she spoke out loud in County, Virginia. She called the alarm. We are witnessing the same tactics of Mao being used now in an American cultural revolution. These courageous people include North Korean refugee Yon Mi Park, who informs us what equal means in a totalitarian society that had five zero, 50, subclasses used to allocate rice and ultimately totalitarian control. She speaks that her experience at Columbia University was shockingly similar to North Korean mind control, one of pure indoctrination. These ideas lead down a path that Frederick Hayek described in The Road to Serfdom, the inevitable destruction of society in the collectivist model, as we have seen time and time again. Stalinist Russia, Maoist China, North Korea, recently Venezuela. I call for immediate suspension of
Thank you, Mr. Tippel. Next up is Clay Leeds. And following Clay Leeds will be Sheri Morgan.
I have two items I want to speak on. Am I going to get three minutes for each? No? Has my time started?
Mr. Leeds, three minutes total for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
So first of all, thank you very much. So it's kind of tough to follow that because that was inspiring. My two issues are, one of them is that the calendar in the Laguna Beach Unified School District no longer has a subscribe function, which means every one of you is going to have to enter 50 dates in your calendar instead of clicking a button, spending 30 seconds or a minute and a half to do it. Hopefully, one of our fantastic IT people can figure that one out. We've had it every year except for this year. So the second one, the second issue I want to address is that the busing for Laguna Beach Unified School Districts goes up to middle school out El Toro Road. There are about 1,000 students out there. Not sure exact number, but some of the most active parents in Laguna Beach Unified School District, past parent-teacher association presidents, many active parents live out there. And all of us have to drive two, three times a day into town so that we can pick up our kids, drop them off at soccer, take them to band practice, take them to drama, just come into town to get food, whatever. And there is actually a part of Laguna Beach that is on El Toro Road, on the north side of El Toro Road. There's Artisan, there is California Cove, there is Laguna Terraces. That's all 92651, actually Laguna Beach. They have zero busing for high school. The trolley also does not go out there, unfortunately. And I don't, if I asked how many people have ridden OCTA buses, I doubt I would get very many hands in this room in the last year. So that's not really a good option for us. And we don't have the school trolley or the town trolley going out there either. We've been working to try and get them to do it as well. It would be fantastic if the Laguna Beach Unified School District Board would press the Laguna Beach City to try and get some busing from the trolley, which is a lot nicer than the OCTA to go out there. That would probably save 1,500 to 2,000, maybe more trips per day in and out of town. It would save on parking. It would minimize some of the traffic that gets bottlenecked going to and from all day long. So thank you for your attention and thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Mr. Leeds. Next up to the podium is Sheri Morgan. Sorry, Mr. Leeds.
Hi, good evening. It's so nice to have everybody together. I'd like to say hi to the board and to the boys' club sitting across the table. I admire all of you, but it's just another example of the male dominant district that we have in an industry that is primarily female. So just wanted to point that out. I am also here as a parent to speak about the transportation to El Toro and to point out the glaring disservice that you are doing to our students by not offering equitable opportunities to get to school. I think it's assumptive to assume, in my opinion, that it's not an area that needs to be serviced and frequently goes unidentified by our district, given the fact that there's no transportation back and forth to that area. We also have the area of Crystal Cove, although it's not as impacted. Certainly for those families that might need the service when they're going out to bring their kids to school, that's one issue. But to go back home, I don't know when the last time you was, you've driven by Crystal Cove, but there's usually a 40 or 50-car lineup along Pacific Coast Highway waiting to get in, all of the workers for the day that are coming in for gardening and contracting and things like that. I think that this district needs to immediately go to the city and come up with an agreement where you can provide transportation. The district not providing transportation is certainly affecting the quality of life of all of the families in Laguna. I've lived here and driven out that road every day for 10 years, taking kids to swim practice, taking kids to ballet. And it's a 45 to 50-minute drive when school is out and people are trying to go home. And if that's not a drive that you're familiar with, I would challenge all of you to get in your car when the school day is over and see how long it takes you. Mr. Conlon, I know you experienced it because you had to do that every day. And I think there's bigger issues with the city, but I do think that you have a relationship with the city that you can find a way to solve this problem. We have offered, we have buses that go from Thurston home. We have buses that go from Elmore on TOW home. So it seems that over and over again, we are here fighting for our high school students who are at the pinnacle and most critical point of their education because it is their last stop before they go out on their own. And there is a lot of support that we can offer that would demonstrate that understanding that you are serving a community as a whole, not the easiest solution to solve or the easiest problem to solve. This might be a little challenging, but you need to roll up your sleeves and get it figured out immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Next up is Doug Warren, followed by Colleen Connolly. Yeah, Doug Warren on principal and teachers at Thurston.
When we moved back from Washington DC to our home, that was kind of a cross on Bridge Road. Ginger used to get out and she was used to a lot of land in Maryland and she'd come across the school here. And we'd get a call and we got a couple of calls. The principal was delightful and such a gentleman and so understanding and it was great. So we had good feelings about Thurston. And then two weeks ago, we were up at top of the world and as we turned, come down park, there was a lemonade stand. And operated by three guys, three boys. And at our age, we kind of miss judge age. I thought they were, I didn't know what I thought. Anyway, they were two guys and they had a lot of drinks and cookies that they had made. And we had a little exchange of money and bartering. And finally, I asked the one kid, I said, well, where do you go to school? He said, I go to Thurston. So I said, well, how is Thurston? What kind of school? And was he cute? And I put myself in his position or, you know, when I was in Emerson Junior High School in West LA and I wouldn't have been like this. He said, I love Thurston. And I said, well, is it, are the kids happy in the teach? He said, I love everybody there. This is not a kid that seemed weird. He seemed very genuine. So I asked him, I said, are there black kids there? And I was a little, I thought maybe I'm, you know, I shouldn't be, but I did it anyway. And he said, no, everybody loves them. We all love each other and we all love going to Thurston. So congratulations to the principal and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Next up is Colleen Connolly on reimagining California school education.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to bring up something regarding the programs that the school has been using from Challenge Success, Education Elements, Mr. Burgess's contract that are looking to be signed tonight for $20,000. Teach FX, which is looking to be signed tonight for $12,000. Many of you have probably read in the paper in the last week or on the news, California educators are working to reimagine math in California students to make it more equitable and fairness throughout the state, which Laguna Beach has already done. Critics say, and I've seen it, Long Beach or Laguna Beach, that guidelines will hold back gifted students. And I'm seeing it everywhere because they want to keep everybody the same till 10th grade to give every, or till 11th grade, to give everyone a chance to succeed. And I find that really difficult to imagine. I have a niece in medical school and I have another niece here who wants to be challenged and has a passion for math and science. And they fight and fight and fight that she can take classes to make it interesting to her. Right now she has a sub for AP Biology. We don't know how long that's going to last. But if we're going to do that for math, why don't you do it for sports? So nobody can excel from ninth grade to play on varsity. Why don't we do that for bands? You may not go on the marching band in high school if you not got to senior year. Why are we picking and choosing who it affects? Because it's awful for the kids. You want someone to have a passion. I do not have a passion for science, but my niece does. And why does she not get to grow and change and fill that passion at Laguna? Because we're changing everything for, you know, to make it equitable to a certain age. If you were a prodigy in music or piano or how many people sent their kids to Orange, the Orange County School of the Arts? What if they said, no, you can't do that. Your kid can't excel there. It's a public school. Why are they being allowed to excel? I think it's something that needs to be looked at and I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Connolly. That concludes the public comment cards for that item.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. We'll now move on to six on the agenda, which is reports. First is such a pleasure to have student board members joining us again. Dr. Valori, will you please introduce us to our two new members?
Well, we have Isabel, Isabella Reichel, and we have Natalie Sutton, both 11th graders. Actually, would you be willing to introduce yourselves a little bit?
Hello, everyone. My name's Natalie. I'm so honored to be here and be on the board with you guys. You guys are all very respectable people up in our district and I'm very glad to be being able to put my input and my student perspective on all the things that our district is going to be incorporating. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isabella Reichel. I'm, like Natalie said, very excited to be here, grateful that I was chosen for the position. And I think Natalie and I both have a lot of great ideas that could possibly be implemented. And we're excited to share a little more of the perspective of the general student body.
Thank you both so much. There's no report tonight, though. Do you guys have a report? Oh, please. We're excited.
I am part of ASB and I've really noticed that ASB right now is currently struggling creatively. I am part of ASB and I've really noticed that ASB right now is currently struggling creatively and financially and just the upcoming PEP Assembly. We just are not really sure about where we should do the homecoming PEP Assembly. COVID guidelines have obviously said we can't do it in the stadium, gymnasium. So I think just a thing to report on is just the ASB is wondering if you guys have any ideas on where we could put it. And financially, it's hard to put it on the field and stuff like that. And I know that a topic was brought up about how. Someone might want to be able to help us out on events we want to do. So that was just something. And school pride and engagement has been very active this year. Many students report to be super happy back at school. About ninety-five, ninety-five percent of the students I've talked to recently are all planning on attending this tomorrow's football game. ASB students are also decorating the school with posters to enhance student positivity overall, they can, over the campus. And ASB has also been getting together to discuss ways to incorporate more school pride into our football games and fun Fridays.
Okay, like Natalie, I wasn't completely sure what to say on the report since it's my first one. But just some notes from the first three weeks of school. So currently the period for changing people's classes has just ended. So now everyone's kind of committed to their classes. But I'm not sure if this is a normal thing for every year, but I've noticed that around 10%. Of my class and all of the AP classes that I'm in, around 10% of the kids in those classes originally have now dropped those classes. And I've kind of noticed that trend with both AP classes and with zero periods. So I think what happens unfortunately is that people sign up for way too many AP classes, especially for junior year. Cause we didn't really have a lot of that last year. But I'm, I don't know, I think it might just be a little bit of a problem because the counselors have to reschedule it for everybody. So I feel like it would be a little more helpful if before choosing our classes, we were kind of made a little more aware about the commitment. Because it seems like a good amount of people are dropping those classes. And then just another thing, a few students, myself included, seem to be a little confused about the nature of the tutorial. Session during school, which if you're not familiar with it, it's every day before the third period of the day. We have this like forty-five minute session called tutorial. And some of my teachers are under the impression that this is just an extension of their own instructional time. While others kind of treat it as just a block for us to do work for other classes. So I know there's been a bit of confusion with that. But other than the tutorial, I think the students seem to be adjusting fairly well to the new schedule.
Thank you so much for your report and I know that there are people that will get back with you with those answers. And next up, we're gonna have be our bargaining unit representative and Margaret, you have a floor for CCA.
Well, welcome back to in-person meetings. We've been about eighteen months from the last time we met. I'll be brief. CSEA has been working very collaboratively with administration on meeting the memorandums of understanding. That we needed to follow the board's direction and the governor's direction. And we have had a meeting where the MOU submitted to through our six-ten process. And I bring that clearly because that is part of CSEA's process was approved. We also. We'll be starting minimal negotiations next week on a follow-up from our tentative agreement that we reached in June. And we look forward to that. And with that, we are very happy to be here and look forward to having the most positive school year we can have. Moving forward with all the dynamics of the pandemic and the variants and the viruses. That will constantly be needed to be overseen and. Dealt with as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Sarah Hopper, Labuva.
Cheers at all the sites. The overwhelming. Feeling is that everybody is happy to be back in person. We want to stay in person. We want everyone to stay healthy so that we can all maintain all our classrooms. And I was at a president's meeting and some of the presidents were talking about reinitiating MOUs. Regarding teaching students in the classroom and having and teaching them virtually at the same time. Because of some high COVID rates, which I thought was a horrifying feeling to have to consider that. I'm glad we are not in that situation. I hope we don't get in that situation. And to that, I have to say that our facilities and maintenance crews are so busy wiping down all, every high-touch spot. And keeping our campus clean and our learning facilities clean and sanitized. And I'm sure they are getting their 10,000 steps in every day, if not more. Also, it's been, teachers have had a really positive attitude about. Being able to develop out our MTSS programs and having more teachers and instructional assistants allocated. To support our students in math and reading throughout the whole year for the specific purpose of intervention and student improvement. And this also allows many of our students to more fully access our curriculum. So teachers had expressed that they were really pleased with that. Labuva also will be, we worked with the district on the MOU on the board directive. And our process is a little more streamlined and that we don't necessarily have to have a full membership vote on an MOU. So that seems to have gone smoothly to my knowledge. And also, and then we will be going back to negotiate next week as Margaret said, so both unions will be doing that.
Thank you, Sarah. It's good to have both of you back and, and the resilience of you and all of your members and all of the students. This moves us to six C, which is our school resource officer, presentation tonight.
Red, there we go. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be, seeing all your faces and back in person for these board meetings. And it's, it's definitely nice to, to be a part of this and feel connected with everybody here in person. Not a lot has changed since my last report. I'll keep this brief because I went a little bit over last time, including interruption from my local human. But September is our preparedness month. Myself, along with our emergency operations coordinator, is working with our school safety committee to help. Prepare our students in case of emergency, whatever that may be. Part of that is trying to create a pamphlet that they're gonna hopefully be handing out to the kids at some point. I'm working with my EOC on that. He just brought that up recently as something he wanted to try and work on. So we'll work with the, with the school district on that. E-bikes have continued to be a hot topic for us. We're gonna be working with Thurston Middle School to. Educate more the kids on the do's and don'ts with, with riding bikes. And it, it tends to be the, unfortunately, the Thurston Middle School kids and adults, believe it or not. That are kind of the main violators when it comes to the e-bike stuff. But we're gonna continue to work as diligently as we can to address those issues. And then National Walk to School is coming up on October 6th, which is always a fun event. We get to involve a lot of our investigative team that like to do that. So all of our detectives and like that are gonna, are gonna join us and we'll walk the, walk the school with the kiddos. And, you know, continuing to serve and support our school district. It's nice that I've been in the process of getting an office at the high school, which has allowed me to be on campus more. I can still work on a lot of the other projects that I have and my caseload from the police department. So that's, that's, that's been a big help for me. So continuing to, to support the students, it's nice to have our student representatives here back in person too. So it's been, it's been a busy first couple of weeks back at school. But as, as they were saying, it's, it's, everybody seems to be happy and positive and getting back into the swing of things and, and getting back to normalcy. So it's, it's, it's been busy, but it's been great. Thank you. And then we have my contact information up here for any committee members. Who might want to reach out to myself or Officer Crotein. We have district emails. So if there's any concerns or anything that you want to bring to our attention, email's the best way to get ahold of us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the report. That brings us. Dee on reports, which is superintendent.
Good evening. I'll keep my report brief. First, I want to wish the members of our Jewish community a Happy New Year. I also want to thank our, both of our associations and as well as our leadership staff. I think the last time we were together, it was the week before school started as a regular meeting. And just how well the school year got off to a start is just a testament to all the work that goes into getting the school year up and running. As Ms. Hopper pointed out, our classified staff, maintenance staff have done a fantastic job and continue to do a fantastic job. Our teaching staff and all the work that went into preparing for the school year, our classified staff and instructional aides attending trainings. And really, we've done some role shifting and we're very excited to see what that hopefully will support our students even more so. As we've added continual support to our students, especially in the areas of math and English language arts. So I look forward to being able to provide a more comprehensive report once we really get going here to the school board. Regarding just data from last year as well as other, other topics. I also want to thank our two student board reps as well as those that were not selected. They had a very rigorous process. That was, we had several students on the interview panel. Actually, I think there were four, four students, including Sorin, a name you probably remember. Who helped interview our student board reps and two that are sitting before you were the unanimous decision. And so I'm very proud of both of them and I look forward to working with them in this whole year. So with that, I will relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you for that report. Next up is Mr. Colin.
Thank you, President Normand. Good evening, everyone. So first off, as Sarah and Margaret shared, I just appreciate them for their collaboration when working through the bargaining, the impacts and effects of the vaccine mandate. It was a lot of work, but we're, we got to a good place. And that was, we were able to, at this point in time, all staff who are not vaccinated are, have been part of a weekly testing process that's been placed since the first day of school. Excited to see that, especially with meeting it with other districts today. No other schools that were at the meeting had even begun the mandatory testing for unvaccinated. The deadline is October 15th, but for us to be able to meet, get together and get, and have it in place, you know, by the start of school was, was impressive. We appreciate their, their work with that. We also completed the vax, the, your, your request for the all vaccinated staff to have a one-time testing that took place last week. Happy to say, there's only about ninety-plus percent of the results are in and zero positives in that regard. So that's excellent. We continue from HR team perspective, need to fill the, the various vacancies. It's a few less than it had been, but we're still continuing to fill. And we are actively recruiting certificated subs. The, the sub shortage has continued into this year. So if anyone has a thirty-day credential or is, has the, we'll be advertising on social media to get as many people as possible to join our subsidy ranks to help us. Support when we happen to have staff out. So appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to become back to the table with both bargaining units next week to handle negotiations around the additional compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colin. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Yeah, I want, first of all, just want to say, it's, it was the back school nights started last, last week. And we've had three of them so far in the high schools next week. So that's been nice to see that come back and, and the teachers, you know, talking to the parents about what's going on. It's been really good. I would say probably one of the most important things that we've been doing lately and Dr. Valory talked about it was. A lot of the planning that we started, you know, months and months and months ago, were really being implemented. These first couple of weeks around intervention and assessments and really great to see so many staff members working collaboratively to figure out, how do we help the students? And how do we keep them going and progressing? And that's been just really exciting to see that. It's, it's very challenging work. So I'm very thankful to work with, with such. You know, such inspired staff that wants to work on that. And so that's been great to see. So, and then I do want to thank the HR department as they work through a very challenging sub issue and the instructional side. Like there are some trains that we really want to do and, and we're looking forward to having availability of more subs so we can do potentially more training with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Welcome Natalie and Isabella. Thank you for your service. Really appreciate you being here. But on to something really exciting. We are wrapping up our audit from last year. So our auditors are here this week. I know President Norman didn't meet with Royce, our lead auditor. Things are going well. There's a lot to audit with all the new relief funds. So they're working really hard. But it's, as always, very helpful to have these audits done as required. But also having these conversations with auditors and having them back in person for the first time since the pandemic started has also been helpful. So looking forward to bring that back towards the end of the year for your, your review as well.
We look forward to it as well. That takes us, misses to item seven, which is public hearings. At six forty-eight, we're opening public hearings to increase the 2021 GAN limit by one million, two hundred, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. An adoption of the 2021, 2021, 22 district appropriation subject to the GAN limit. For public comment, Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on this?
No.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. With that, Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you. This will be the public hearing section of the annual requirement for our school district to. Bring the GAN limit resolution to the school board for approval prior to September 15th each year. This is that item. As is typical for us, our GAN limit will need to be increased as our tax revenues exceed what the GAN limit calculation provides. However, we will thereby increase our GAN limit, which is presented at the later item for consideration, which then reduces the state's GAN limit. So as we increase our GAN limit, we're drawing down from the state's GAN limit is the rough explanation of very complicated calculation. There's no fiscal impact, however, it is required via Proposition Four, which was passed back in nineteen seventy-nine.
Thank you for that.
Jeff, can you explain just in general what the GAN limit is with the audience?
Sure. It's a very complicated calculation. However, in the simplest terms, it looks for school districts specifically. The average daily attendance, so our ADA versus the per capita income for the state of California in that year. As the per capita income grows and the ADA changes year over year from the previous year, it's calculated at the change to establish what's called the GAN limit. Which sets a limit for the amount of revenues or tax revenues that can be received or should be received by public agency. And so what happens is the state has a GAN limit and then local agencies like us have GAN limits as well. And when we have to increase our GAN limit, we thereby reduce the state's GAN limit by the same amount. It has not worked in the reverse, but it's never had to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. At six fifty-one, we are closing public hearing and moving to seven B. At six fifty-one, we're opening public hearing to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials of the 2021, 2022. Per Education Code Section six, zero, one, one nine B. And certification of provision of the standards-aligned instructional materials for public comment. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on this?
No.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Mayberry, you have the floor.
Thank you. Per ed code, districts must adopt a resolution of testing to the specificity of textbooks and instructional materials in their core classes in the first eight weeks of school. And so this public hearing. Is, sets that, sets that up. And then, you know, we've reached out to, we've contacted the schools and we're going through that process of confirming. That students all have the instructional materials for those classes that are in those curriculum frameworks and adoptions.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. And at six fifty-two, we are closing the public hearing on this side. We're moving to item eight. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards? Anyone wishing to speak on this?
No.
And as a reminder, we did have two comments, public comments on the written form on this. So Dr. Keller, the floor is yours. Oh, you're already over there.
I'm officious. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Board President Norman and the team members of the board. Executive Cabinet, community members, student board reps, community. My name is Michael Keller. I'm the Director of Social and Emotional Support. And it's my pleasure tonight to talk about a really heavy topic, but an important one on suicide prevention efforts. And really I'm presenting on behalf of my colleagues from the Good Beach High School. Mrs. Alex Wayne, formerly Mrs. Alex Aronson, our student sports specialist and Mrs. Grace Jones, our school. Mrs. Alex Wayne, formerly Mrs. Alex Aronson, our student support specialist, and Mrs. Grace Jones, our school psychologist at the high school, who really worked very hard to implement some programs and services this week and ended next week going into classrooms. And I want to also take this opportunity to highlight our district-wide efforts to implement our board policy on suicide prevention. Next slide, please. I want to give you a little context about youth suicide. And according to the CDC statistics, youth suicide is the second leading cause of death amongst youth ages 10 to 19 across the country, with over 500 individuals dying by suicide in that age span each, in 2019. And in the month of September, we recognize suicide, National Suicide Prevention Month. And the week of September 5th through the 11th is National Suicide Prevention Week. Tomorrow, September 10th, is a global recognition of World Suicide Prevention Day. And the whole purpose of all this is to continually on an annual basis, bring our attention to the stigma associated around mental health and really the most extreme impacts of mental health, which is death by suicide. So we certainly want to do all we can to have effective prevention systems, intervention systems. And, and in the event of a, of a student death, ways to support our community in the aftermath of a suicide. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of that work today. You most recently updated board policy 5141.42 on suicide prevention in April of 2021. An important update at that time was to be inclusive with our providing prevention training to all staff kindergarten through 12th grade. Previously, the law required us to provide training for seventh through 12th grade, although our district was, was more inclusive in, in terms of providing staff training for sixth through 12th grade. So right now we are going to be implementing a fully compliant K through 12th grade prevention training model. We also want to ensure that we're addressing students who would be most at risk for suicide with some of their risk factors. So students who are LGBTQ, students who have substance abuse impacts, previous issues with homelessness or foster care and, and other factors. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So our district over the last four years has been implementing really the best practice approach to suicide prevention. We use national models and local models of practice and designing our system of care. On the prevention side, we want to, again, that focuses on breaking the stigma around accessing mental health. We have an incredible team of eight school counselors across the district. We will by next week have three student support specialists or social workers serving students at all levels of the school district. And we have a team of five school psychologists. So that's 16 individuals providing school-based mental health services in some way, shape or form. Additionally, our administrators are really important as crisis responders to provide support in the event of, of a student who comes to our attention. And then our system around universal screening is a critical factor in, in identifying students who initially may be presenting with distress and being able to follow up. Our trainings focus K-12 now on identifying risks and warning sign. The risk factors are those more stable, less controllable for the school district, but really environmental factors that might elevate a student's risk for, for self-harm or suicide. Additionally, we train all of our staff or will be training all of our staff on warning signs, which are really the immediate triggers right before a student is exhibiting self-harm behavior. And so those could include everything from isolation, changes in mood or behavior. It could thoughts of suicide, expressing thoughts of suicide and writing or verbally to others, lots of other factors that are really important. And this week, there had been a variety of different activities in the, that teachers have been delivering in the classrooms that, that are helping to raise awareness around suicide risk and warning signs. Ultimately, the really important piece is not only identifying the risk factors or warning signs, but is immediately connecting a student to support. So that's the action step that we want our adults or fellow students supporting their fellow, fellow students with in terms of getting immediate attention. On the intervention side, that whole team that I mentioned of school-based mental health providers provide, we have a standard protocol that's based on a variety of different models, but a best practice model in suicide risk assessment. And so we speak the same language at all four of our school sites around suicide risk analysis. We keep parents and guardians involved at, if in the event of, at any level of risk from no risk to, to high risk. And then of course, if a student is moderate or high risk, we engage professionals, licensed professionals in the community, either emergency responders or SROs or other providers to help us with providing support. Another really important component of intervention is in the event of a student who is hospitalized, confidentially and holistically, working with that student and family to help support the student's successful reentry to school. We want to ensure that students are provided with not only school-based counseling support and frequent check-ins, but also academic accommodation support in the short term so they can work on their stabilization. We've also, most recently, thanks to the board approval, adopted a new simulator, online simulation-based curriculum from Cognito. And Cognito enables teachers, and actually we have a secondary program that middle schoolers and high schoolers will be able to access for free, that helps simulate difficult conversations around mental health. So there's a variety of different key responses. It guides you in, in learning how to master and initiate that conversation. And then again, most, most importantly, access support. In the extreme, most unfortunate event of a student death, we have staff members trained in, in crisis response. And we partner with the Orange County Wide Crisis Response Network. We had a student death a couple of years ago and that, that group was instrumental in supporting us through that loss. And we continue to train on an annual basis and try to get better as, as a community of care providers. Okay, next slide, please. And for today, I just wanted to share that our high school and middle school student support specialists will be continuing to do direct student training and work in classrooms around providing, in the health classes and all ninth grade health classes next week. Michelle Foster, our health teacher, plus Mrs. Wayne will be in classrooms doing more specific suicide prevention training. Every student who's participated in health over the last four years has received a similar training. And, and the middle school level, we, we want to do more specific explicit training to students in suicide prevention that will happen this year. At the elementary level, you have to be developmentally appropriate with how you deliver this content. So we're not talking about the word suicide specifically with students that are, that are in the elementary grades. Our second step curriculum is an approved suicide prevention curriculum because it talks about mood identification, how to access support, how to help your friends with problem solving, how, how to seek out appropriate adults to get, to get assistance. I have some additional research, resources on here if you were interested in finding out more information. Of course, with anything, our staff are available 180 days a year during regular school hours. And I just want to point out that in the event of an emergency and it's outside of regular school hours, always call 911. And, but there's other, other urgent responders available through other, other sources, whether it's text or, or the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and et cetera. That's it. Thank you so much. I'll open up to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Keller. Are there any questions?
Yes. So if, if it's a student, you, you end up needing to call 911 and they are taken to the hospital and say that's on a Friday, is there anyone at the district available over the weekend to go see them or counsel with them or?
Well, that's a great question. We have had situations that happen late at night. I mean, that carry on to the evenings and our direct assessors typically are communicating with the next responding service provider. So in the event of a student being hospitalized, they're now under the care of both the student's parent and that hospital. We typically don't have any direct communication until the following Monday. So they're under the care of typically a licensed provider until they're released from that care. Now our team, they're not obligated to, but in my experience, our team is monitoring emails and phones over the nights and weekends. But, but, but that's not under their, under their contracted service work. So we would follow up immediately the following week, that's our practice, to ensure that we've communicated with the parent about what the projected treatment steps are from that point.
Wonderful. And I'm really glad that you are working with K-12, that it isn't just middle school through high school because I know in elementary I had three.
Exactly. Yeah. And so we, in, we don't have the most current Orange County updated data, but, but I was talking to a colleague today who's at the Orange County Department of Education and working with the Orange County Coroner. And, and there's some interesting information that's unrelated to suicide, but there is a, there is a notable bump in student death that, that during the COVID period for youth. So, and, and so they're still unpacking that information and I'd be happy to share it back in a weekly update with the board.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Keller.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is this additional resources? Is this on our website?
All of these are on our website. I'm not sure if every one of those, most of those links are too. Yes. Those are on the crisis response page.
Thank you for including Trevor.
Of course. That's really important.
Is suicide prevention or any of that information on the back of the student's ID cards?
Of course. Yes. So the law also requires us to have suicide prevention information anytime we issue an ID card to a student. So I think if you check the back of any students ID, we are compliant with that. And there's also, I think, a domestic violence line on there as well. Yeah.
Thank you for the great presentation, such a hard subject.
Thank you.
Dr. Keller, you mentioned some of the work that's being done in classrooms this month. And I was curious if the really impactful student video that you shared with us last spring was being used in those presentations because that is futures, their peers and people they may recognize as a way to stop the stigma. Yes.
Yes. That's a very powerful video. And I don't know, did you see the video to which we're speaking? Okay. So yeah, it was, it was, it is being shown as, as part of the work. And then the teachers are, have a, have a set of questions, just open-ended questions to help kind of process and think about, and think about the issues shown in that video. I'd be happy to link that potentially. It's a YouTube video. I'd be happy to link that. Really great advocate on suicide prevention across the country.
Great. And to members of the public, if you haven't seen that video, I would highly suggest watching it. Thank you.
I would just say I really recommend to get the best message out to the students, definitely the social media accounts. I'm going to be honest, the students don't check a lot of like the stuff that's posted on like the school website and really formal things like that, such as Canvas. But I know that when people are scrolling through like their Instagram story and they see something about it, they're more likely to click on it.
That is great. Thank you. Yes. I, I recognize that as an adult, we speak a little bit different language, access information differently. These, I would imagine, parents are accessing this way more than students. Ms. Aronson does run LBHS Wellness on Instagram and, and there are some other, hopefully you're following that. And I'm confident she's posting on this topic this week.
Was that just at the high school for social media?
That is the LBHS Wellness social media account from that Ms. Ms. Wayne, I said Ms. Aronson, sorry, is, that curates essentially and publishes lots of different content around the wellness topic. So that is specifically for her. And then I would imagine that our public information officer is, is resharing some of that content.
Yep. Just a thumbs up. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Keller. This moves us to 12A, which we had voted to move forward. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on this?
Yes, our first speaker will be Wyatt Peabody, speaking on the baseline COVID testing topic, followed by Sheri Morgan. And thank you.
Is it on? Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's surreal to see you all in person and not on Zoom. I have spent the past 18 months managing COVID cases in Texas, processed several hundred of them. And I've seen firsthand what it does to people and families and communities. And it's not pleasant. You know, I know it's a, it's an emotionally charged issue we're talking about. I see both sides. I have friends on both sides, but if we want to keep our kids safe, baseline testing is the next logical step. If we want to keep our kids in school, it's the same logical step. Because the rate things are going, we might not be in school. LAUSD tested 600,000 kids and the first two weeks they had 3,000 cases. We had a case, a transmission here on campus last Tuesday. It affected 42 families. From what I hear, it's all hearsay, so I don't take it as fact for me. We really should have done this before school started. I don't know why we did not. That would have been the responsible thing to do. It's not too late. California's looking good. Orange County is looking even better. Thank God. We may have already hit the crest. We may be coming down. We'll see what happens with school openings and with Labor Day festivities. But as of right now, we're, we're looking pretty good. That being said, it's absolutely essential to get a baseline test for the kids. Identify who's sick, take them out of the population. As it pertains to LAUSD, had they not removed those kids from population, those 3,000 infections would have become 15,000 infections. We're dealing with a Delta variant, which is 50% more contagious than the previous variants. And whereas before you can infect two people, now it's five. So you see the exponential growth. And those extra kids who get it, if they're not tested, they're just passing it on. So baseline is the only logical step. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Wyatt. Sheri Morgan. And following Sheri Morgan on the topic of baseline testing will be Colleen Connolly.
Hi. I'm not necessarily speaking specifically about whether I'm pro or against baseline testing. I think that to manage this virus, there's a lot of different approaches. And I think the term Swiss cheese was used, but I would like to speak on whether or not you're putting the cart before the horse. And again, if you've thought about our students and put their needs before the fear that has come in. But before I address that, I would like to remind you all that the special meeting on Friday was specifically about weekly testing. And through what I believe would be violations of the Brown Act, Mrs. Normand, member President Normand pushed through this item today for baseline testing. Doesn't mean I oppose baseline testing, but I am really starting to struggle with the process of how things end up on the agenda. If you go back and watch the video, you'll see that many members said, I don't support weekly testing. But the questions continue to pursue. There was no vote. It was supposed to be for information. And so by taking a topic that was a special meeting on weekly testing, somehow we found ourselves at baseline testing. So a procedural thing that I think has happened over and over again, and so I'd like to point that out. With that, I would like to address the fact that as a district, from what I understand, and perhaps I'm wrong, and if I am, I hope so, we do not have a plan for students that are taken out of our education system and sent home. We have situations where we have students that have come back with a negative test, positive for strep, and suddenly they are on a 10-day quarantine with no access to Zoom education. I certainly understand living in Laguna Beach, if you make Zoom education available for everybody again this year, you probably won't have a whole lot of students in class. It was a nice offset to a big problem, right? Some people took advantage. Some people really struggled. Everybody's all over the board. And we as a district need to address everybody's needs. So I would like to encourage you, if you are so adamant about testing to make sure we keep everybody safe, we also need to go back to what one of the root problems were last year and we need to make our kids' education our number one priority. Because if you take all these tests and you're like, oh, you have to go, you're, you might be contagious, it might be a false negative. You're sending them home to, without access to their education and you're, and it's a mandated 10-day time at home. 10 days means you have to have independent study. But from everything I'm hearing, there's no Zoom access, there's no access to the teachers in between. But from everything I'm hearing, there's no Zoom access, there's no access to the teachers in between. They kind of have to figure it out and hope they can get some time with a tutor or something else. You need to start thinking about the big picture, not the individual fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Uh, next up, Colleen Connolly on, you had two topics, so this one is on baseline testing.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to point out for the testing option. We keep. I want to stick with facts. Last Friday, there are forty-four people in quarantine and are active with COVID. In the Laguna Beach Unified School District. Today, there were twenty-three. So it has not spread and it is not going anywhere. I still have an opinion that it was based on everybody I know coming back from vacation internationally. And across the country within the five days before school started. And that seemed to be playing out with the numbers. So I definitely think we need to continue to look at that as we make those decisions.
Thank you, Mrs. Connolly. That was the last common card on that item.
Thank you, Clark Osborne. Dr. Borri, for yours.
Thank you. Well, as a result of last week's meeting, um, the, the direction was to bring back some additional information to the board. Um, on this topic. And so what I'll try to do is synthesize the different feedback. And guidance that exists. And then. You'll recognize through the presentation that, as we've talked about last week, there are a lot of options for consideration, so. We'll get into a little bit more of the detail and, and some of the, the language that's used by the Department of Public Health as it relates to this specific topic, so. First, CDC guidance, this is the, the most recent regarding testing, surveillance testing, screening testing. And essentially what we recognize is that screening testing identifies infected people. Students or staff, whatever, whoever's being given the test. In K-12 schools, it can help promptly identify and isolate cases, quarantine those who've been exposed. And they're not fully vaccinated, et cetera. CDC provides that people who are not fully vaccinated do not need to participate in screening. Testing, and that is something that they, that is in their guidance, that they don't recommend those that are vaccinated participate in screening testing. So I think the most important point on this slide is from, again, directly from their guidance is that decisions regarding screening testing. Should be made at the state or local level, and that's what we're having this discussion here at the local level. They start to qualify when screening testing would be most valuable. They consider screening testing valuable in areas where there is substantial or high community transmission levels. Or in areas with low vaccination coverage and that other prevention strategies are not being implemented, so. Masking is a prevention strategy, reduce class sizes. There's, there's multiple, multiple opportunities for prevention strategies in school districts. That will help mitigate potential spread. The. Conversation around students who haven't been vaccinated, again, this is CDC's guidance. Again, if it's moderate, substantial or high level, which I'll go into on the next slide, what that, what that represents. And then they start talking about options. They talk about multiple screening strategies can be utilized. Uh, you could do pool testing. You could randomly test ten percent of the student body who are not fully vaccinated. You could. Understand that in doing so, uh, you could end up with some false positive results. But as they mentioned, it could be, this is one of the strategies that school districts can use. They do recommend that testing happen for high activity sports, especially when there is high rates of transmission in a community. In terms of where Orange County currently stands, um, we current case rates at sixteen per one hundred thousand. If you look, you can see that, um, per CDC definition, uh, that puts us at moderate. In the case rate specific to students who are not able to be vaccinated, so our four to nine-year-olds. Most recent, and this is a seven-day lag, um, recognized, uh, most recent case rates, twelve point four per one hundred thousand. And our ten-to-twelve-year-old group is fourteen point four. This comes from, uh, the, uh, local CDPH, Orange County Healthcare Agency, uh, data points that you can look up. They're all public. So right now, as stated, uh, we are in what would be considered by CDC guidance, uh, moderate transmission. Now, the Department of Public Health, uh, in California has additional guidance, um, that reflects CDC guidance. But also provides some more options, um, that are more to the local level. And it's specific to California. Partly because California, um, Department of Public Health has provided resources to have students tested and staff tested at the state level. They're in behind the state funding. And our local Department of Education has also, uh, been part of that outreach to our local school districts as well. So, again, they, uh, they recognize vaccine uptake is really what is very important to help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen. This is what will help students stay in school throughout the school year. They also recognize, uh, that vaccinations are not being taken by everyone. And more importantly, for our student population, they're not yet available for students eleven-year-old and younger. In addition, uh, not all of those who are eligible, um, have decided to be vaccinated. And that because of that, the will have continual needs regarding prevention strategies, so. That includes testing unvaccinated. Now, as you all know, we do currently test our unvaccinated staff. We will continue to do that on a weekly basis, um, and that is at the board direction. So COVID testing, um, in this sense does, uh, again, for Department of Public Health guidance, remain a powerful tool. For, uh, school districts to utilize when necessary. They go into greater detail, and there's a graphic actually, um, on the following slide that. Helps put this a little bit into context, but they provide four categories. That schools and school districts may think about when, um, reviewing testing options. One is just keeping track of COVID, uh, where you have lower case rates in the community, and that might include periodic testing. Yeah, preventing outbreaks of new cases via screening, which is what the discussion is, um, here tonight. And they talk about frequency that you may utilize in the future. Obviously, the direction from the board was simply to provide. You know, the, the, the discussion was going to be around one, you know, baseline testing and then determine if there were additional steps at a future meeting. The other component is responding to school outbreaks. We would do this and have been doing this in instances where we might have, um, you know, students in a classroom, uh, multiple students that might be infected. Provide, um, testing to those families. And then last but not least, helping kids, um, helping keep kids in school, um, by doing symptom testing and testing to modify quarantine. Again, something that we're working with our families on. Excellent. So, again, going back to, um, this is a graphic for the visual learners, uh, of us that exist, including myself. But this is a little easier, uh, format, um, less narrative and a little, little bit more clarity around. You know, what is the focus of the testing? The key, I think, is that the word at the top there, these are options for consideration. So, uh, CDPH does not provide a hard and fast expectation around testing. They really do leave it up to the local area to determine what is the situation in the school district. Um, in the community and what is then, uh, the decision of your local agencies to determine how best to move forward. Next slide, please. So they do talk about different options that, again, uh, may exist in terms of how you might go about testing for, um, our, the students. So, uh, there's pooled PCR testing where you can have, uh, one whole classroom, um, utilize the same, um, tube. And test all twenty-four students at one time utilizing the same saliva kit. And they don't pass the saliva kit around, just so we're clear. But the, uh, the kit is all contained into one, and that tests the whole group. And if there is then a, uh, positive, um, that whole group would come back, you'd have to then PCR. All of those students individually. So it's, it, they say it's a way to, um. Test more students potentially, uh, but on the flip side, if you have a positive, you're gonna have to go back and test all of them again, right? So, uh, again, this is under the keeping track of COVID. Column here. Population tests, again, you could test ten percent of your classrooms as an option. That would determine, um, you know, potentially as a, as a ratio, what you could expect in other classrooms. And or, again, at least ten percent of all unvaccinated staff and students is another, um, option. And frequency of testing, again, under keeping track of COVID, um, pre-entry testing, which is something that, um, again, is no longer. Now, at this point, we are past pre-entry, school started. However, there was discussion at the last meeting around the potential of looking for pre-entry after. Holiday breaks, so Thanksgiving, uh, winter break, et cetera, when students might be traveling or, or exposed, um, outside of our local community. Again, there's a lot of adaptability in these, in, in the language here, so. In terms of preventing outbreaks or new cases via screening, again, they talk about a pool PCR in elementary schools. They talk about antigen tests, which are immediate responses, as well as lab-based PCR tests. They talk about who should be tested. As you can see there, again, this is their recommendation. It would be unvaccinated students and staff, not testing. Vaccinated, um, students or staff. And they talk about frequency, again. So when you have an outbreak, obviously that changes things because then you're talking about having, you already know you have cases on campus. And this would then be how you would move forward potentially when you have an outbreak. It really is dependent. There is no definition of outbreak anymore. We all, I used to have that under the old tiered system. When they were talking about an outbreak, it was a certain number of positives, um, at a school site. That no longer is the case. It's on a case-by-case basis in conjunction with the local healthcare agency. And last but certainly not least, again, testing symptomatic people, right? So, um, and the ability to modify quarantine. So we, we are currently using, um, our lab-based PCR tests. Ambry, uh, to do the, um. Symptomatic, so if someone comes and requests one, we provide a kit, um, but also to modify quarantine as well. There are. Again, multiple options within this, an antigen test, just so, um, we're clear, they have some available if we were to, uh, wish. That would provide a fifteen-minute, you know, fifteen to twenty-minute response for students. We have not procured any of those, uh, to date. They do require a little more of an invasive because it's, um, it is a nasal swab. Not a saliva test. So, again, going back to the language that they used, um, that schools could consider doing, um, frequency testing, screening. At the start of the year and then, again, determine if there was interest, um, around every other week or monthly to determine has case rates increased or decreased. So. The next slide is really kind of where we're at right now as, um, as the district. And that is determining what is the step one, if there is a step one, which is, uh, testing the community. Again, we are already testing staff. This is specific to students. And then reviewing what options, um, exist. And again, we talked about that on Friday of last week. Uh, and this is the continuation of that conversation. So, bless you. Next slide, please. So in terms of options. What I'll, before I get into the options and specifics that for the board to consider, um, I reached out to several different. Doctors in our area. Spoke to a, a doctor from Chalk, um, spoke this, just this afternoon. To a doctor from UCI, um, who was on the school, uh, task force, still is, as a member of the, the task force. As well as reached out to our local healthcare agency. The resounding response is. Look at the CDPH guidance, determine where the transmission rates are in your local agency needs to determine what it is they feel is best on behalf of their students. If you were to press and, and ask, which I did in one instance in particular, um, you know, based off of what you're seeing and then in. This was posed to one of the doctors, uh, what you're seeing in terms of case rates. What is your sense? And, um, you know, his view was the data is showing that we continue to see a reduction, which is good. Reduction in case counts. The, uh, the schools have started, and so the majority of schools in Orange County have, are, have been in session now for two to three weeks. So, uh, it's nice to see that downward trajectory. Um, however. His word of caution was, uh, don't make a decision now that makes us say you can't make a decision later, that you may need to do something different. Right? So, um, any decision now should be flexible so that you can respond to any changes that need to be made. By your organization at a future date. So. Again, I think it really boils down to the board's decision around this topic. You know, there could be options of a blend, there could be options, um, where, you know, again, the board decides. Mandate all students one time, or mandating specific groups, we could do cohort testing, uh, we could do ten percent. You could, as a board, consider testing students with parent consent, um, using an outside provider where we simply say those who wish to be tested. We're happy to provide that, um, as an option. And right now, we're using Ambry and parents are taking it home. But we could bring on an outside group to do that, um, for us. Or we can continue to just maintain our status quo, which is making test kits available to families who wish to use them as needed and not require testing. You know, I investigate in other school districts, uh, around besides, um, some of the local districts. It, it really runs the gamut of what people are doing and what districts are doing. Um, it varies much the definition of local control. One district, very similar to us in size, San Marino, um, they have a very robust, um, testing policy. On behalf, and it's really just consent, parents consent, they, um, determination is made. Parent says yes, they sign off, and the, uh, the group comes in and tests those students that wish to be tested. So it real, again. It's a challenging situation for us to make a determination in many ways, simply because we don't know what the future holds. But on a positive, and I think we should all celebrate the positives, is that we continue to see numbers declining here locally. And what, um, Dr. Cooper, uh, out of UCI made a comment that really resonated with me, and that is. Kudos to those school districts in Orange County for all of their work in using mitigating, um, factors to the degree we can. Reducing class sizes, masking, um, really being vigilant around, uh, testing students who are symptomatic. Testing staff, et cetera. And, um, you know, his view is. Uh, we will continue to watch and monitor and, and pay close attention to what the data shows, so. With that, I'll pause and. Take any questions.
Were, did you have time to reach out to one of the districts that had tested young children and how they did it and how that went?
I did reach out, um, unfortunately did not get a response back, um, in terms of the amount of time that it was taking them. I, I think it really is determined, we all know that the initial, uh, time takes probably to register kits as an adult takes, uh, a few minutes. The, the actual saliva test itself takes probably a minute. So, uh, if you factor, we have about twenty students in a kinder classroom. If the teacher worked independently with each student, it could take, you know, twenty minutes. But I would expect that if it would, wouldn't be that long, um, giving group instruction around that. It's not the most difficult thing to do. And it's, uh, is to, and that's again, if we use Ambry. You know, there are other options available to us if we were to go with a different, you know, type of, uh, test.
I, I was picturing it being much more difficult. I, um, haven't taken it myself, but I've talked to people and it's taken as long as fifteen minutes. To get enough spit, and I'm just picturing myself as a kindergarten or first grade teacher. Trying to comfort kids that can't come up with enough saliva and it, it taking a long traumatic time. So that's why I wanted to know how it worked in other districts.
Uh, Dr. Flores, is there a possibility?
under the chart that had the colored headers for when to offer screening testing from the CDC? It said weekly, that was a key thing that I picked up on, yeah, if you go back a couple of slides, just for the, everybody's benefit. It shows the transmission levels and when to offer weekly testing exactly. Is there a way where, given our current setup with Ambry and our current PCR-based saliva tests, families could opt into that and have their child come home with a test on a certain day every week? And meaning that there's not a large impact to the classroom instructional minutes, but those families that would like to opt into that could do that?
Yeah, again, there's multiple options, you could, we could provide a, you know, I guess, lack of a better term, a kit in a backpack.
Yes, like, there's no, nothing keeping us from having people put their name on a form that they'd like to participate as a family, giving that consent and those kids going home
Correct.
with children and not being something that a, a parent or guardian has to pick up.
Correct.
Okay, and, and I know with Amber, you are, can only test every seven days.
Correct.
So that, but there's no supply issues or what have you, we could procure the right amount of kits, if that was something we could offer for this guidance.
At this time, we have many kits, now, again, what two months from now holds, I, I can't speak to, but at the current juncture, you know, we don't know how many people would, would be willing to participate or would want to. That would also determine the amount of kits that we would have available in the long term. But right now, in terms of our ability to access kits from Ambry specifically, we were able to access what we need.
Okay, because it does seem like from the members of the public that I've talked to, and in my personal experience, it is a very easy test to administer at home under parent supervision, and the interface is very nice, and much of our school community is already familiar with that style, so it seems like that would be the easiest thing to offer, if those kits, like you said, could actually go in a backpack or go with a student.
So Kelly, how would, how does that differ to what we're doing now, you know, they were doing, would you want to broaden the number of parents that are doing that?
Yeah, great question, so right now, if you would like to access the free PCR saliva kit, you need to pick that up at a district office or a school site. And school sites are, are just kind of hard to get into during the day with parking and all the things that are going on, volunteer restrictions. And so what would change would be that that kit would actually go home with a family that has opted in to a weekly testing program. Or at least that's what we were kind of discussing, versus just picking them up on an as-needed or as-desired basis.
Is there a number for how many are doing that now? Or do we not know that with the restriction?
Number of, of students that are currently testing?
Using those kits, with the parents who have been picking them up at the school sites?
Probably don't have a firm number on that, I mean, we, we know how many tests we've given out, but in terms of specific student tests, it's, it would be a really rough number.
Could we do something like encourage, not mandate for anybody, but really encourage families to do it after they've been traveling over, like, the, the holiday season?
You know, we did that last year, obviously, we hosted several different testing events after breaks. The response rate, I think, early on was higher, but as, you know, the year progressed, we saw less and less parents take us up on that offer. But of course, we can offer what, whatever it is that the board wishes.
Well, in addition to traveling, the concern now seems to be about large events. And so perhaps if we were doing something, what Kelly was suggesting, that we would then provide information to parents of when they might think about finding out if they are people that participate in events with large numbers of people. That that might just be something that they would think about to think that they would need it for their kids. Since we're still on questions, are there other mitigating factors that we can use outside of testing, are we using all the other ones, or social distancing?
Well, social distancing, because you're masking indoors now, the, with other mitigating factors, air purification, et cetera. The state basically essentially said there's no need to social distance. Now, we have taken the proactive step of maintaining to the degree possible, the smallest class sizes, again, especially on our, our elementary level. So, you know, we are, it's a little harder at secondary, obviously, we know kids don't come in perfect bunches. But we do have, to the extent practical, as much space between, and we are trying to limit when students have their masks off to and when they're eating, to limit that, so it's not no longer than 15 minutes necessarily, so there's other things that we're trying to do. But again, I think we all recognize that the Delta variant is, is something that's a little more challenging around the research, because it has happened so quickly, we, we all recognize that it does spread much easier, and, and that is clear. So, you know, what are all the successful mitigating factors? We're doing as many as we can, and, and I think we've been as successful as we can be. The masks, from my conversation with, with Dr. Cooper this afternoon, was masks seem to be one of the most important things that we can do on behalf of students and staff.
How does a lunch work without the masks? Are they distanced?
No, they're, they're sitting at a table eating.
Because last year, they were kind of, you know, two apart here and one over there, so we're not and why aren't we having them distanced at lunch?
Well, last year when we did lunches, we had multiple lunches, we had a totally different system. And so this year, again, without the social distancing, masking outside is not required. Even without lunchtime, you're allowed to take your mask off outdoors, that is the current guidance.
Even if you're right next to somebody. I mean, it seems like we could, if we thought that was important, if you have a 40-minute lunch, you could have half the stu, 20 students, half of the students take 20 minutes of PE and then come to lunch and then switch them around. It, I, I thought it kind of spread through the air, so it seems like if you were sitting right next to somebody, that would be a possibility.
It could be a possibility when students are simply at recess even. So that's why, again, the, there isn't universal masking outdoors, that has not been guidance that has come to us.
Masking, because you can't mask for lunch, but spacing.
We do our best to maintain spacing to the degree practical.
So from the feedback you got from the experts you spoke to the last couple of days, and first, thank you for putting all of this together in four days or less. No, less than four days, it was a holiday, in three days, really appreciate it. But in the guidance you get, it sounds like what you need from the board is something maybe a little broader, a little more flexible. Right, so that you're able to make decisions, so it sounded like, right, around how to use other mitigating factors when needed. Is that correct from?
Well, the discussion last week was essentially, we had two members that were not feeling comfortable mandating screening for all students. I thought we had two members that were willing to and interested in potentially doing that. We had a member who wanted more information, and, and so that's what we're here for today, obviously, is bringing that information forward. But the board needs to make, ultimately for me, if it's, the topic is testing, doing COVID testing to students. Is the board commitment that, yes, they want, you want me to test all students mandatory, or is it something different? Is it, you know, provide as, as Member Osborne points out, simply provide for those that wish to have consent, come up with a system where consent is given, and we send them home. Or, again, there, there's so many different combinations that you could utilize. I think the key question is, do, are we going to test all students as a mandatory? And if not, we can maintain and offer testing as we currently are doing, and, you know, we could change that system and cycle a little bit. But I think the topic at hand really boils down to, in my opinion, is, does the board wish and direct staff to test all students mandatory as a baseline one time, or not?
I still have a question related to that, as far as what is the legality on a mandating for all, I mean, what are the opt-outs?
I can have our council write a specific legal opinion on that, but as we
Are there opt-outs like there were for vaccination, which is very, for staff, which is very narrow?
My understanding with, based off of Eli, unified his approaches, is that the opt-out would be, you would opt out of testing and thus opt into independent study, is what their approach has been. Again, the board could take a different approach, it's really within the purview of the board.
Another question, what San Marino is doing, do you think, so that, is that mandatory, or because they're asking for a sentence, not? So if the board didn't feel like mandatory work, would you look at something like that, or could you look at something like that to implement? Which is a little more than just in the backpack.
For sure, I mean, that is definitely an option, and I did reach out, again, truncated timeline. So I reached out to, and talked to and actually Shelley did as well, trying to reach out to talk to the, the folks, I reached out directly to their testing company. And, and Dr. Special reached out to their staff to see if we could get some more feedback. I haven't received anything yet. It, it doesn't seem overly complicated what, what it is that they're doing. They simply are those that want to be tested, they're testing weekly. And those that come up symptomatic, they're using the rapid test right there. And then there are, as we would traditionally do, offer testing for those students to take home to then submit if they were needed to go onto a modified quarantine due to exposure.
Are there any more questions? And just, would you repeat that on the rap, on the rapid test they're using as the more invasive test?
Yes, and they, and that is, again, if you, when you review their website, that's with parental consent. So if a student wishes, if a family comes to pick up their child, they are doing as an option. We have not explored that in our district yet, as an option, something that we were interested in doing. Again, that would be with, that's with parental consent, that test.
Is that with using an outside vendor? Right, so we're not asking staff to do more, but that's happening with outside vendor coming through?
The outside vendor, from what I can tell, and again, I haven't had a chance to do all the follow-up, but the outside vendor, from what I can understand, is the one from doing this, all of the testing, the consent testing that's happening on a weekly basis. But staff are the ones doing the, or allowing it to be self-administered. But monitored, the nasal swab is, can, the rapid can be self-administered but monitored, doesn't have to be done by staff.
And that's all, they're all doing that on site?
Yes.
Regarding the rapid testing, would there be, if we were to procure tests to offer to families, either to use at home or with consent for the school nurse to supervise or use? And do you foresee there being a financial impact, a large financial impacts, because I, I believe those tests are pretty inexpensive.
There are options through the state, through the CDPH. I have to explore those in greater detail and determine potential costs, we do have some potential costs. If we were to test everybody and, and we were to pay for the full cost of those tests, of just the regular PCR test, we do have an estimate, estimated amount there. But it's, it's really a challenge, because we would have to determine, are we going to ask people to provide their insurance information? Which is what they do in San Marino, if you, if you're giving consent and you have insurance, they ask you to provide it because it offsets the cost as well, there's, there's components that districts are utilizing, because insurances are supposed to cover the costs.
Okay, that helps, and then a follow-up question would be, do we have a sense of how many students are coming to school that are symptomatic? Meaning where a rapid test would be in order, right, that rapid test is the most logical test for somebody that child that has a sore throat or stuffy nose, do, do we have a 10 of those a week, or one of those a week, could you give us any?
I don't think I can give you a, land on a firm number right now, yeah, unfortunately.
There are maybe kids in the nurse's office that are having symptoms that need to get picked up to go home.
I was at a school site today, and there was two students.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Then can I have a motion to approve baseline COVID-19 testing for all students?
Are we in discussion on the main motion now?
We can't until we have a motion. I'll second, and then we're in discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
So your motion is addressing only one option?
Well, I wanted to move to amend the motion.
That, that's the discussion to then amend, that's the whole point, but we have to first get a motion on the floor.
Well, I thought Dr. Kelly just gave us one.
He did, and I seconded it.
Okay.
So now discussion starts.
Okay, so would you like to discuss, or would you like to hear my amendment, proposed amendment? Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna move to amend the main motion that's on the floor, which is baseline, one baseline testing to be as follows. To test all students in LBUSD for COVID-19, striking one time. And inserting before students return to campus on November 29th, 2021, and January 4th, 2022, with proof of a negative test within 72 hours required to enter campus on those dates. There a second on that?
Second.
Yes. Sorry, I know we were going for more vague, and I went for more specific, but in the interest of time.
Kelly, so you're asking not to do it now.
Correct.
Proposing two future dates, but mandated for all students.
Mandated proof of a negative test to return to school. Do you want to read it again?
No, I heard, are you basing that on thinking that students are traveling over those periods of time?
Uh, yes.
So for a family that feels that that doesn't include them, then what is their option?
None. Yeah, and I think I, I'm basing it, I, we have a, we can discuss it now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the proposed amendment is to strike the word one time. Because I'm proposing that we test students before returning to campus after the Thanksgiving break and after the winter break. And the reason that I'm doing that is based on my research from CDC and CDPH. The three things that they recommend, we look at, level of community transmission, which Dr. Valoria shared is currently moderate. I expect that to go up in the winter months. The second thing that both of those organizations suggest we look at is COVID vaccine coverage. Right now, that's high, so I don't think it's indicated. And increasing, I could share more on that. And the third thing that they recommend that we look at is whether our COVID trends are increasing or decreasing. And right now, we're decreasing, over the last 14 days, we decreased 37%. So I don't think that a baseline testing right now is in order, but I am in, in support of a baseline testing, or maybe we could just strike baseline as a testing that's mandatory for students to re-enter campus after the Thanksgiving and the winter holidays.
And where did you get our, in which our vaccination rates are high?
Great, yeah, good question. So for zip codes, it's from Orange County Healthcare Agency, retrieved today, September 9th, for zip codes 92651, we have 76% vaccinated with one-plus dose. Four children 12 through 17, 63% have had one-plus dose. And I did want to point out that this was significantly up from when I looked at it three weeks ago. We were closer to 43% three weeks ago in our teen, 12 through 17 population for those same two zip codes. So that is just a fantastic movement that we've seen in our youth population. But that would be considered high vaccine coverage, so again, CDC and CDPH recommend that local agencies, look, you know, groups like us that are trying to make this decision on screening testing, look at those three factors, community transition, transmission, vaccine coverage in your community, and your local outbreak trends, whether they're going up or down.
When I looked at it, it was up to 40%, and that's why I was very concerned, right, thank you for looking today and seeing.
How would they get the results three da, the results? Three days, they'd have to take it three days before they actually came back? I'm not, I'm not totally following, hell.
Yeah, great.
Great question, and this is, these are, these are some ideas. The implementation would be left to the executive cabinet and superintendent, but one idea would be almost like the test, taking home a test. So on the last couple of days of school, students would take home the test kits that we're already familiar with in our district. And, you know, be given the day that they need to take them and send them in, so it wouldn't be an on-campus event.
So it wouldn't be an on-campus event. We wouldn't be taking away from instructional minutes. And it would be done in people's privacy of their homes, under their own parental supervision.
They wouldn't have the results before they returned to school, I think is what Member Perry was indicating. But they say they return on a Sunday and school starts on Monday. Then you'd want them testing it after that travel or whatever was completed. Then we wouldn't have the result and they would return to school anyway.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's definitely, I think this is one of the hardest things to solve for. I think last year, we were, we offered clinics to come and bring students to test. And there is a, it's not going to be 100%, but I think by having tests that you could take with you wherever you're going, similar to like if you're traveling right now and you're trying to come back into the United States, you have to produce a negative test within 72 hours of that flight taking off. And so.
But if you're traveling within the states, you don't.
Correct.
Well, that's, I mean, I just, I'm just not sure I relate to the fact of how we don't, that we still get kids back on campus and then they get the results of the test.
So you mean like if they, well, for example, if you have a test and you mail it in, then when you have your results back, you can come back to school with negative. I think the main point.
Then they wouldn't be back when school started. They'd have to wait for that. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think if your school starts on Monday and you test on Friday or you test on Thursday afternoon, you could still have those results back. After the winter holiday, we're even more fortunate because we have Monday as a non-student day. So that would be, that would make that even easier.
Still was that if their time that you feel they're susceptible hasn't finished yet, they wouldn't want to test before that was over. Because it's still a snapshot in time. I mean, it's still, you're negative one day and two or three days later, you might not be.
Correct. But I still, I still feel like, based on the metrics that we need to look at, community transmission in late November and in late December, following holidays and possible amounts of travel will be much higher. So even though it might not be 100% perfect, I think it would be an improvement upon what we've done in the past and would be better than doing a baseline testing right now. I just, I don't see that that makes sense at this point to do a baseline testing, say, in two weeks.
Just as a point of caution, if they're required to come back, if they cannot attend school unless they have a negative result in their hands, just sharing with you anecdotally with the system we have in place right now with Amber Genetics. We have, every time, there's a number of inconclusive tests. If the sample wasn't a saliva or those situations. Or there's just, you know, they'll, they'll lab it. They say 24 to 72 hours once they receive the test kit. But that's not, we're not seeing that on a consistent 100% basis. So just if the mandate is they cannot step onto campus and cannot attend school without had that negative result in hand, I can foresee we're going to have students not able to come to campus because of issues out of their control. Even if they turn the test, even if they submitted the test 72 hours prior, there's still no guarantee they're going to have those results in their hands. I think Victoria can attest for what test kit got lost. Like, there's just, it's not, it's not, it's not a perfect, you know. So just something to think about. Like, I understand what you're saying. Just there's a lot of logistical pieces with that that would be potentially out of the students' control, but that would limit them from coming to school.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think this is one of the harder things that we grappled with last year in the winter holidays. And I guess I want to put out there that there's not a perfect solution to this. It's just on the topic of testing, can we test a little bit smarter? So for example, if we're going to require testing for all students, which is what is on the agenda for discussion tonight, even if it's one time, when would be the best time to do that? And my opinion is that right now, in the month of September, is not the best month to do that. But we have had a lot of feedback that students will come on campus after presumed very risky behaviors of the holidays, where there is a higher rate of travel and there are a higher rate of large gatherings. And what could we do to prevent spread there? And that's where I think screening testing comes into place. So I don't think it has any other place unless we were doing it weekly. And so that's why I'm proposing that amendment.
And the screening test, though, I mean, we just got back from the holiday. It's a three-day holiday, but it's still a holiday and people do travel. That was part of the thought of doing it now. I don't know if narrowing them in so much makes sense or seeing how they should do it so much as mandating testing around times we know will be higher peak and then let them determine what that is, I think, as experts and what, how the systems work, make more sense. And offering some hybrid solution. There might be some parents who do want to do the test at home, other parents would be like, I'd rather you do it at school. I'm not going to remember to do it or I'm traveling, I might lose the test. There's all kinds of other things outside of people's control, but I think allowing the experts to determine what works is better if we, if we want to amend the motion slightly, if I amended a motion slightly to allow them that flexibility, I think we might have a majority. Right, for them. So when they see it coming up, then they could do something, which might still just be the holidays.
Yeah, I think one important point is to try and prevent students from coming onto campus COVID-positive. And that's a hard thing to solve for. And I'm looking at Mr. Conlon, looking at Dr. Really, that is a hard thing to solve for. So I know this seems like a very brash amendment. And how could we solve for this? And maybe what I propose, that's not the exact way that it gets handled. Maybe there's lots of other creative solutions, but I think the goal is that if we were going to test all students, that we would do it before they return on those dates. And we know that people are traveling, so.
I think my questions were in line with what Mr. Conlon said, is that I see that as really problematic as to when the test is administered, when the people actually return, when their kids return. And then if they don't get the result, and then they're sitting out, not coming back to school because they don't have that negative test report.
Could they just use a rapid test at that point for those off chances?
There certainly was a lot of objection to that test itself for students. So I don't know that that would be, you know, might be problematic for parents for having their students take that test.
I mean, you could, yeah, I mean, you could use a rapid test if you so inclined. Self-administered, it would be probably the, unless there was parental consent to have staff ever do it.
Yeah, again, I'm not proposing the exact way that it gets done. I just think that that's, I think that's one really effective way that we could use screening testing.
Right, and also opening it too is the fact that they might determine somewhere in between there, there could be an event that changes that, whether it's a sporting thing, it's just a high school, or I think giving them a little more flexibility to react would be better than just, it's just these two days. I think that flexibility is important.
I'm going to vote against the amendment. Because COVID is fluid, what's going on. And the national COVID cases are going down slightly. deaths are increasing and more than 25% of new cases are in children. And I would really like us to have a baseline now to see what's going on. I've even, I've even thought of doing a research study. Don't use the primary kids, use the middle schools and the high school and then see, you know, what we look to get. But I have full confidence in the administration and their thinking on things. So I'd like it to be as flexible as possible for them to carry out. But I'd like to see a baseline. I really like your ideas as far as for them coming back after the holidays. And I really would think we could do the rapid test, you know, at the school, if the public cost us more. Or allow the parents to do it at home and then the ones that we don't get it back in time, allow the kids to come to school and do the rapid test right, right on the campus.
Oh, I'm not comfortable mandating for the elementary kids at this time. I don't feel like I have enough information, if it, like you were talking about, Board Member Kelly. Maybe for middle school and high school and see how that goes. I like, I don't think we should do it right now. I think it does make sense to have it more after vacation. But I would, I would like to take more of the approach of really encourage, you know, putting out information about travel and being in big groups and encouraging people to volunteer to do the testing, not mandating it.
I just, I wanted to add in that according to what's up on the screen, that screening testing is suggested for those not fully vaccinated. So it's actually more indicated by the CDC and CDPH for our elementary schools than it is for middle and high schools. Because again, our middle and high schools are at 63% vaccinated. So we need to remember to follow the guidance of what CDPH and CDC is telling us and where it's indicated. We don't think we're going to have a vaccine out, you know, until towards the end of the year. So if we're following what CDC and CDPH are recommending for screening testing, it would indicate to test more heavily at the elementary schools. That's, that's the hard thing, is trying to just go back to what the guidance is we have from the state and the federal level to be able to make this decision with the most amount of data we have.
This is not a Pollyanna approach. But I really feel that I would like to see us focus most heavily on providing information and education to parents about the importance of testing and the importance of what the numbers are for kids with this variant. Although now it's, now it's going down here, but there are other variants that are going to come. Because I just, I'm not comfortable with mandating it for all students. That's, I said that last week. But I do think that parents have their, the well-being of their child at their heart. And if they have enough information of what they need to do to protect that student, their child, they will do that. And if we provide the kids, I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to be Pollyanna and think that everybody's going to jump up and do the right thing. But I think that I just have confidence that they will. And I'd like to see us take that approach.
And that has been our approach so far, and we can continue that approach if that's, you know. And as I said, that is one of the options, is just to continue what we've been doing, which is push out the information, make the kits available, et cetera. So, but I believe you guys, you have a motion on the floor for two motions.
Are two different motions right now? Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. I just, I thought, I thought Kelly amended the original motion to be an amended motion. Okay. Right, and what's? Okay, right. And so that's if Victoria's going to take a, starting with.
So the amended motion that you would be voting on now is to test all students in LBUSD before students return to campus on November 29th, 2021, and January 4th, 2022, with proof of negative test within 72 hours required to enter campus on those dates. Member Bickers?
No.
Sorry. Isabella?
Yes.
Member Bickers was no. Member Kelly?
No.
Member Perry?
No.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
It was more flexible, but no, just for just the two days, no.
Okay, so that motion fails. And the second motion or original motion is to approve baseline testing for all students.
And so should we discuss that now? Again, I'm very conservative. I'm more like with Wyatt that my public health background is such that I believe that we should be testing, particularly to get a baseline on what's going on in the community, even though things are going down. 25% of the new cases are in children. And my big thing is keeping the kids healthy and keeping the schools opened. I really don't want to see happen to us what happened last year. And so that's why I'm for doing the baseline testing.
I am well as baseline, and I know it was a short holiday. It still was just a holiday that we just had. And I think that we ask our employees to be very proactive in what they do. And I think the baseline, the baseline testing gives us a proactive stance to make decisions off of. And I think it's, I think it's important not to be reactionary with COVID. It's spreading too fast. There's additional variants coming. And that if we have, give the superintendent the flexibility, we have faith in him that he will do what's needed. And if what we need to give him that flexibility is baseline testing first, that's kind of what we're saying on Friday. Well, if we just do that, then we would have this comfortability of what we're going to, how much flexibility we're going to give him around screening. So if any at all.
Is, excuse me, is Dr. Valoria saying he needs a baseline testing?
My understanding is it's coming as a board member request. It's coming as two board members' requests. Two board member requests.
Yeah, and to clarify, the motion that's under discussion is one baseline testing, correct? Just because I want to be clear, baseline testing could be, I'm baselining in September and I want a baseline again in October or September. So I want to be really clear, the motion on the floor, correct? Victoria is one baseline testing.
The motion on the floor, as stated, was approve baseline testing for all students.
Usually what baseline means is to get it, find out right now.
One.
Yeah.
If you have, to me, if you have a baseline, that means you're going to have something to compare that to. And that means you're going to start more testing, and I'm not supportive of that.
I do feel that at our school, it could cause some commotion between the students if it is like where some students are getting tested and some students aren't. Because I know that I have spoken to about four people who have stated that it makes them just a little bit nervous that they don't, some of their peers, I know that. And all of my classes, probably about like two of them are very anti-mask, don't want to put on their mask, don't want to do any of that, don't believe in anything. And I think it's, it makes students want to fight with each other because they feel like, well, I want to feel safe at school, but then their student next to them might not want to get tested.
Are you saying if testing was optional, they might not want to get tested? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no. Then there it is for a time.
That's okay. It's fine.
I think that some students feel like it's unfair that if it's optional, because then the students who are worried about their safety and are worried about getting infected, they have to worry that the students who don't want to get tested aren't going to get tested and are going to come back and could potentially affect them because they said they want to opt out of these testings. Whereas if it was mandatory, everyone would have to be tested. So no students would have to go to school feeling unsafe that like, just because a student was very against even the cultural things that go along and social things that go along with getting tested. They could just be scared that those students who don't believe in any of this and are super against this, which they do very clearly demonstrate at school, they're scared that those students will infect them because they don't want to get tested, whereas a lot of the majority does.
Thank you for speaking.
I have a question for the students that have had discussions specifically about testing.
I know that I have personally spoken to around four students, which were my friends. So maybe I don't have a very broad view because I have not asked like people who are the random people around our school. But people have stated that they're just nervous that other students are becoming to school and they, other students don't care and just because they care, but since other students don't and they don't want to get tested and they don't want to take any of the protocols such as putting on their mask, it puts them in an awkward position in the classroom because they just feel unsafe.
I have a follow-up question on that. They do have to have masks on at school. So they, is that enforced for them?
Yes, it is enforced. I see it enforced all around.
And all of the students who play sports have to be tested? No, they don't.
No.
Oh.
That's not current requirement.
I just want to reiterate that there is a lot of smarter testing we can do, and that's why I'm not in support of this. not in support of this. Student athletes, exposed students, unvaccinated at the elementary school. I just think we need to follow the guidance that we have in terms of when to offer this. And I agree with Jan's comment, what is a baseline unless you're preparing for a weekly screening test? What are we comparing it to? We're looking at our local data, looking at the three things that they recommend when considering screening, testing, community transmission, vaccine coverage, and whether COVID is increasing or decreasing in our county. And so, you know, again, if we go back to what CDC and CDPH has told us to look at when considering testing, all of those things don't point to testing at this point unless we want to offer screening testing weekly. And the board did not, was not in support of bringing that forward. So again, to Jan's point, what's a baseline if it's not going to lead to weekly testing? And I don't agree with having more flexibility for implementation. I think this is a very delicate topic. Testing students weekly could have an impact on instructional minutes. And we have guidance from CDPH. The guiding principle is to keep kids in school and maximize instructional time. So unless it's those take-home kits, I don't support testing that takes away from teachers' time with their students right now. It's so critical to me.
But having forty-two students in quarantine also takes them away from school because someone came and we didn't know it.
Possibly, but there's a lot of modified testing rules that allows students to stay in school. If a student is vaccinated or even unvaccinated now, as long as it was a school exposure, they could still test and stay in school. So, you know, it doesn't mean that kids are, you know, going to be out more. We have, there's, there's a way for them to stay in school with smart testing, which again, is not the board item under consideration. But I do think there could be other changes that could be made that would be smarter testing than this.
And I, I think the conversation was whether we're, whether we're asking the district to look at testing options at all, they needed to hear from the board on Friday if testing options. The only testing option the board considered with the majority was a baseline, just a one-time baseline. And that is a consideration of how did it work? Did it work in the system? Is there something better or smarter for them to come back and tell us? Or for us to just give them the flexibility to look at the data and make those decisions on their own? I think if it's mandated, though, we would still have to state the part that we want to mandate it, right? For them to come up with the solutions of how to, they're the experts on how it's going to work. And so the baseline was just, how did it work? How will that work in our school system? And what else will we have to do? What we have to do differently? And whether we should be testing just the unvaccinated. But the feedback we got, where parents were really worried about testing just the unvaccinated because they felt left out, or to create a subset of students. So then do you just test everyone just to make it easier? And there are companies that come through and they go from classroom to classroom, and they do all the testing. And you take out whichever kids, right, and rotate it in and out. And there has to be a time period within the day that can happen. And again, they're the experts to figure it out. And logistically, they can figure out all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not in support of that. I had a conversation with a family in LAUSD specifically on how their weekly testing regimen was going. And it, for a middle school classroom, their middle school student was spending, it was a thirty-minute process every single week when that class was up, whether it was six-period science or whatever. And I, I just, again, going back to the CDPH guidance for the year, maximize instructional time as much as possible. I do not support in-school testing, especially where we are right now. To Dr. Kelly's point, we need to remain flexible if the data changes. But what I'm looking at today, I, I don't support that.
Is it a possibility if the student doesn't get tested in the first, like, if the student doesn't get tested before they arrive, there's an option where they can come to school early, I don't know, thirty, forty-five minutes before the bell rings to get a rapid test?
Because this is, we're talking about a one test right now, not testing regularly, but.
Right. I mean, again, I think that, to your question, yes. I mean, that's obviously an option. The, I would be hesitant to use an antigen rapid test as a one-time baseline test. I think if, so, that just, that would be potentially as a, another option down the line. But I think the standard is, you know, is the PCR test.
If we're, if we were discussing something broader. Are there any other, is there any more discussion on this before Victoria takes her call?
Member Vickers?
No.
I'm sorry, Isabella. Jeez, I've got to get back in the swing of this. This, this motion is to approve baseline testing for all students.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
No.
Member Perry?
No.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
No.
President Armendon?
Yes.
So this motion fails. And then we're back up to our Instructional Services, item nine A.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Business Services, nine A.
Oh. Why don't we take a quick five-minute recess, everyone? We'll be back at eight twenty-five.
You go back to where Raina's standing?
Thirty-three, and we are on number nine. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment regarding approval of Resolution twenty-one fifty, increase twenty-twenty-one GAN limit by one million, two, sorry, one million, two hundred, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, and adoption of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two district appropriations subject to GAN limit?
No.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have a discussion, do we have a discussion on this? Because I have that down earlier. Okay. So board members, including students, do you have any questions, though? Oh, we don't, oh. Any questions? I'm very asked what the GAN limit is. Okay. Can I have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
We're in nine.
We're in nine A for the GAN limits.
Second.
Victoria, can you take?
Isabella? Whoops, we have too many mics on.
Is it okay for this one if we opt to decline the vote? I just don't feel informed enough about this topic to make a decision.
Okay. Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Okay. This takes us to nine B. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment regarding approval of the twenty-twenty-one unaudited actual reports?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Armendon. Presented to you tonight is the unaudited actual report for last fiscal year. This is the report that will be shared with the auditors as they complete their audit. There's no new financial information. However, in this presentation, in the report itself, I would like to call your attention to page seven of thirty-two. And for the next three pages, you'll notice new reports. This is our ongoing effort to improve the readability and transparency that we're presenting within our budgets. These are directly pulled from Forecast Five. So again, thanks to the board for your support of that software and Dr. Valoria for introducing us to it. But we hope you find that helpful. These graphics are based on questions that we've received from the past, from both the community and the board. So we're hoping that we can address that. Again, very easy for us to pull together and put in here. Thanks to our, our software and look forward to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Are there any questions from board members or from students? Then can I have a motion in a second to approve?
No, moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you. And it really is a team effort. So thank you. Thank you, Member Vickers.
Any other comments? Jeff, thank you for this. And it was such a pleasure talking to the auditor and looking at how he views this and how appreciative he is also of your team and the growth of your department. Victoria, can you take a?
Isabella?
I'm sorry, which motion is this for? Which number?
This is for approval of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one unaudited actuals report. And if you're not comfortable, again, you can just say I abstain.
Oh, yeah. Can I, can I abstain?
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. This takes us to ten A. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment regarding the approval of Resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, with that, Mr. Dixon, you have the floor again.
Yes, we've, we've talked with the sites and their staff and confirmed that all the students have the instructional materials for those core academics classes, and I mentioned the item here. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Not that may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Okay, Victoria, can you recall?
Isabella?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. This takes us to item eleven on the consent calendar. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, one speaker, Colleen Connolly on Consent Calendar, Challenge Success. You would like to make a public comment after on consent? I don't have those. I have on future agenda items. After Colleen will be Sheri Morgan.
Hello. My concern and want to talk about Challenge Success. I've sent up all the board members back on May twenty-second to have this item added to the board's agenda for discussion for the community under goal one, increase student academic achievement and socially emotional strength through collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and communication. This program in two thousand nineteen and twenty, twenty-five new schools started using Challenge Success, and only seven remain. Seventy-two percent of the schools left, according to their own website, Orange County Schools. So to summarize, Sage Hill, Troy are part of the ones that have dropped out of Challenge Success. And we should know why. Something I found interesting that I've just found out about in the last week is I didn't know Dr. Keller is on their board. And one of the board members, I think it was Ms. Vickers, told me to go talk to him about it, that I would get more information. But if he's on their board, I feel like that's a skewed conflict of interest. And it actually surprised me with all of the challenges, everything that's gone on in the last couple of years, whether it's a calendar change, and so much of the community being upset, on their page under their, what they're for, is everything that this school has changed in the last four or five years. And I find that concerning. And now it's up again for another twenty thousand dollars to pay to go forward with this program, educational, whatever people are calling it. But, you know, like this free period tutorial, it's for video games, or TikTok, is from what I'm hearing. I think one day from my son's friends that I've talked to over the last couple of days, they're like, it's a waste of time. I don't know why. It's video games. It's, you know, we could be out of school earlier. And this is all based on Challenge Success. And you can send out these surveys. I could write a survey, and I could get the exact results I want, I promise you. And that's what these surveys are doing. And I find it manipulative for the students, the families, and the community who voted you in here. And I feel like the community just does not heard. And when it gives students a, a survey of things to think a certain way, but then they go home and talk to the parents, you don't redo it. And there's such a wide array of how you can interpret surveys. And I think it should not be approved, and I think it should be up for discussion with the community at a larger scale. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Connolly. Next up is Sheri Morgan on Consent Calendar, item eleven.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened with the card. I'm pretty sure I thought I wrote something down, but I could be confused. I, too, am concerned about this item. I'm having a hard time pulling up. I was so impressed with the Wi-Fi up here, after being up here for ten years and never being able to even know what time it was on my phone because the Wi-Fi was so bad. So it's clearly things have improved until this moment, of course, because now I can't bring up the contract that I was trying to reference. So, you know, it seems to be that way. But if I recall the contract that I looked at at the beginning of the night, one of the signatories on the document is also somebody that is coming as a speaker to our district and being paid. I think I'm correct in that. And if that's correct, I think that's a conflict of interest. I know there are several, there are many things in place in nonprofit organizations where you aren't allowed to sign your own check request. You can't sign your own check request. You can't, you know, you have to have somebody who's not involved in the transaction be the one that's approving it. And so I think that's a big concern. And especially following Colleen's comments, you know, when you all introduced Challenge Success, however many years ago, I immediately downloaded the book. It's on my, it's actually on this iPad that's now dinging completely. And I really found some of the information to actually be very good. I liked the ideas of later starts. There was a lot of content to it that I thought was effective. But one of the things that always really stood out to me and has been an ongoing problem and an issue in my eyes is that they were very clear that you need to adapt to your community and that not every plan in this book is meant for your community. And yet, it has been dropped in on our community verbatim almost, based on the book. And that's not taking our community into consideration. And this goes all the way back to the calendar change, the second time around, which is where I'm sure I started falling out of favor with some of you because I was very outspoken against the process, and especially given that I knew it was being driven by this new idea of Challenge Success and trying to put this whole plan and drop it right in without taking the time to adapt it to our community. So I do have that issue. And the last portion of this, and it's, I'm trying to make sure I'm walking the right line here, I've gotten so many phone calls from people saying, how come you're including information about Challenge Success from organizations that really aren't supposed to be taking some kind of an opinion? Because people are really upset about it. And they don't like, they don't even like to hear the word Challenge Success. So if you put, you know, a document out that says Challenge Success, they get angry if you send it out. So, because they see it as your opinion. And that's not necessarily true either. So you really are kind of creating a very difficult situation in the community with Challenge Success. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. And I did find your card, so I just wanted to apologize. And yeah, you're not going crazy. There's no other cards to speak on Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. This brings us to eleven B. Do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question, not have board discussion or vote on separately? Any of the items see through? Any of the items see through?
Or pull an item?
Uh, right now, just a question, the next, well, the next section. Oh, Isabella, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not very familiar with this. What exactly is challenge success?
What, challenge success is a model, it comes out of Stanford and Dr. Pope, as well as other professors that are out of Stanford, and the focus of challenge success really is to determine and help schools determine what are the important things to focus on. And it simply is a framework, it is not an adoption of one idea over another. And it is a program that schools opt into, and this is what the contract is for, they provide support, some coaching, some surveys, et cetera, analysis, and it helps us track student involvement, student engagement, concerns that students have around different topics. And, and we also get access to speakers that we do parent education with at different times, so. Probably not the best explanation, but I can explain more offline as well.
Any other questions? You can make a question comment, yeah, just now.
I just wanted to comment on items N regarding TeachFX, professional learning services, and item O on consulting with Dave Burgess for edgy protocols. I really, I looked at both of these items, contracts, and think that this is, these are both really cutting-edge tools that we're using, our instructional services team are bringing forth. One is regarding classroom conversations and strategies, which seemed really interesting. Item O on edgy protocols is also wide-ranging and can be applied to lots of different grade levels and topics. Both of these seem to support what we want from our kids, which is creativity and communication and collaborative thinking, and I just was really appreciative that we continue to seek out kind of best practices and instructional strategies and bring them forward and have teachers and staff that are willing to take on new professional development and new growth in those areas. So I just wanted to comment on that and say thank you.
I'd share similar comment on both of those, and, and it's fascinating, the TeachFX, this is fascinating programs, let's see what our teachers do with that. Okay, so no more comments? Then, sorry. Does any member wish to pull any consent item for separate public comment board discussion and vote?
Yes, I would like to pull L, N, and O.
So could I have a motion to approve C through K and M?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, oh, we don't need a discussion, could you please, two, full call, three, and four?
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Then on so on L. Yeah, we need us for public comment, but we won't have a comment card. Yeah, so is anyone wishing to speak on L? Yeah, but then
You did, and then it was pulled.
Was pulled. Yeah, was pulled.
I just have a quick comment, based on the fact that I'm, I pay pretty close attention to what's going on in the district, and I'm, I try to see everything that comes through, although the amount of email that comes through these days is really difficult to stay on top of things. Challenge success has been a program that's been in our district for quite a while, it's been extremely controversial, and with absolutely all due respect, if the students don't know what it is, maybe you need to look at being one of the 72% that drops out, and incorporate just the good parts of it and then charge your own way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Member Perry, can you lead us in discussion for any addition for L?
I need a motion on this one?
Oh, we haven't made a motion, I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second to approve consent. Second. Okay, Member Perry, can you please leave a discussion?
Um, I think this is our, starting our fourth year of challenge success, is that correct? And I, I think we've learned a lot from it, there've been a lot of good parts to it, I think we should have it by now, I think it's telling that other districts have it for a year or two, and now we're going on year four. I think we could be looking in some other directions. And so I'm not in favor of this.
Anyone else?
I just have a little comment. I know all those, me and Isabella didn't exactly know what challenge success really was when you asked, I have seen it be implemented in our schools when we do have lots of surveys recently, and I think that our school has, does a really good job of like focusing on the students' needs, and I have seen adjustments been made in our school district in multiple classes and things, I can't name off the top of my head, because people have said, oh, we've done a survey and students show they don't like this, and it's like, oh yeah, I didn't like this, and they changed it because they noticed.
Thank you for that.
A clarification from the district, is this the fourth year with the high school, but what year is it with the middle school? Because the contract covers both sites. Sorry, Dr. Mayberry?
The middle, the middle school had started last year, so this will be their second year.
Yeah, so I would add that at the middle school level, having only one year under their belt and having that been a pandemic year where students weren't on campus for most of that year, that we would at least want to encourage that full implementation, and I support student voice, and I think that outside of any of the other parts of challenge success that some families may or may not agree with, that that's a key component. And one of the things that we've learned even just from comment from our student board rep is that we might not know it in name, students might not know it in name, like a branded program, just like some of these things that come in the future, like TeachFX, but they would see the that was you, they would see the impacts of that, for example, in the robustness of their conversation, or in the fact that their student voice is being talked about on their sites and how to engage that, so.
Do you think that could continue without challenge success, though? Don't you think we understand that now and it would go on?
I depend upon the experts over here to tell us when they don't need it any longer. I depend upon our experts to guide us in that. So, when they see it complete. Anything else, Member Perry?
Can I?
Oh, sure, China.
Yeah, I was, so just for clarification, this is something the sites do choose to use, this comes out of their site funds, that they have decision-making process, and so I know in recent conversations with administrations, they're actually, they're looking forward to spending time across the schools discussing some of these things, and this, but again, it's, I, I've, from my previous work, right, I've worked over in LA County, the South Bay area, where we're down in the beach, Manhattan Beach, I think Santa Monica had, Malibu had worked with them at some point, at Paul's Fair Day, right, like similar communities, and a lot of, there's different components to it, it's, it's really a framework, as Dr. Floria talked about, and, but they provide the sites some training, some coaching, right, like we talk about having, you know, the coaching of kids, we talk about coaching our teachers, and then certainly our leaders, we want to have coaching as well, right, and, and, and to have the expertise, I think what they appreciate the most is they have the expertise of a place like Stanford, right, that does a lot of research in this area. And you may already know this, but like the whole reason this came about was in Palo Alto Unified, there were multiple students that committed suicide, but on railroad track that's right there by the school, right, and so this was created out of that need of like, what are we going to do about our kids? Like, they're achieving high, and there's other needs that are not being met, right, and so the focus typically, and when, what I've seen implemented here in other schools, right, they do start the climate of care and social emotional wellness, parent education, like that's kind of ongoing topics, this, one this year is more on college admissions, right, there's different topics there. One of the ones that, you know, one of the frameworks that they have here is around authentic assessments, right, and so that's, we've been doing traditional assessments for, for decades, right, and so you're starting to see, and I think, and probably the kids can speak to this a little bit in science classes, right, like they're rethinking assessments, like are there other ways kids can demonstrate their learning? Are there other ways that kids can, can show progress? Like, it's not just about what are you doing at this point, and if you don't have it at this point, it's too bad for you, right, like can you be reassessed? Can your assessment learn in a different way? So the science has been leading that work at the high school, the science teams, I'm just really creative ways to think about that, how students learn, and, and it's not just traditional by a paper test. And so some of that work comes out of getting that expertise and getting some guidance with that, and so when you look through this, like I also really appreciate the fact that both high schools, and the high school and the middle school want to continue to partner with it, whether it's just teachers, whether it's talking through different thing, components around parent education that overlaps, sometimes it's talking about what are approach, what are approaches to how kids use their schedule. You see project-based learning, which we've done training on in the past, like they have expertise in that area, it really provides a really valuable learning tool for, for the school, the school leaders and the teachers on how to approach it, and I'm actually not surprised if the kids don't know it by name, it's not, there's no, and we're not out there saying this is, you're doing a challenge success fishbowl, right, but we've done fishbowls and we've done panels, and a lot of that, we take what they know about it and apply it, how does this work for our schools and our kids? And adjust it, or, or say, here's what we're thinking about doing, do you have any ideas? And so it really provides a really value that I think that's why they wanted to bring it back and continue that partnership and just how do I have that level of expertise at a place like Stanford to help us?
Just as a point of clarification, I think it's important to note that Dr. Keller is not on their board of directors, I know that was represented, he's not a staff member, he is of challenge success, he is on an advisory council, advisory council is made up of many different people from various walks of life, including psychologists, you know, people who run schools in other locations, including Canada, headmasters, et cetera. And the advisory committee is simply that, they simply serve in the, in the, you know, capacity of advising around different topics. Obviously, as we know, Stanford, the work there is, is very research-based, they have partnered with over 500 schools, and I think also to note is that simply because schools no longer are working directly with, with challenge success, as a challenge success, you know, getting the coaching, whatever, that's okay, the model is flexible, sometimes schools come in, some kind, they come out, and I think that it, just because schools may have left the program and others have come on board, I think a reflection of the fact that the program is something that people in school districts and schools, principals, et cetera, leaders appreciate it, is the fact that they've serviced so many high-performing schools throughout the United States and really North America.
I think it's clear that it's to Dr. Keller that they chose him to be on the advisory that they asked him, right? And then I think the only term I've heard from challenge success that people have just said is PDF, and they go, oh, PDF, right, around vacations or meetings, so it's the only thing that's more a statement that's connected to it than everything else around the framework, and I did, thank you for pointing out the fact that the principals and the schools we all are now on the board in the past, that it was really important for us that the middle school and the high school find ways to connect, and it's such a great way for them to connect and have communication, so the students have a cleaner continuity between us two, as they promote out, so. Any other comments or discussion? On L?
Okay, this, so this is to approve item L for challenge success. Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes, so the motion carries four zero, or four one, sorry. And then, is there any public comment on item N? Looking over public scene, shaking her head, no. Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve consent color, item N?
So moved, second.
And then Member Perry, can you please lead us in discussion of item N?
I, I think that there is value in this and value in, in the next one also for teacher training, but I would like to see us spending our money on students. And for example, you know, these, these things that we have just talked about, well, that I'm, I'm bringing up here, L, N, and O, it's about $60,000. Right now, our, our part-time theater person is getting less than $30 an hour, he's working at three different high schools, so there isn't much time here, and we used to have a really robust theater program, now it's, it's barely hanging on, if at all, and it's, it's not the gentleman's fault, but it's, we, we're not putting any money into it. So I, I'm, I'm objecting to these items because I think we should be spending money on students, I understand from being a teacher that training helps students, I get that, but I see a lot of needs for students that we are not meeting, so I, I'm not for spending money on consultants like this.
Okay, that is. Any other part of the discussion?
I just will point out, we'll provide a clarity on the comments that were made regarding the visual performing arts program and district support in the weekly update.
Thank you for doing that, it's more complex. And this was something the teachers piloted on this particular one, right?
The, the one contract is really around edgy protocols, I think it references that in there. We've had them, we've worked with them before, and it's probably, what? Oh, sorry, I thought we were, sorry. Yeah, so, sorry, TeachFX. The, the best one was actually brought to us by Mr. Miller at the high school, he brought this up, and we were just talking about how do we, how do we integrate more student voice and choice, how does it help students have more agency, what are some practices we can work on, and he actually said, well, this is the tool that we had in my previous district, and so we wanted to basically explore it and see what it is, we're not, nothing, it's optional, and we're working with some of our instructional coaches on what this looks like, and then see where you go from there.
Did our elementary school teachers use it as well? Might confusing my programs.
Mike, can you speak to how your approach to how you got enrolled people in this con, this concept, and that it wasn't something that you brought on, that you demoed it and got some buy-in from people?
Yeah, so, so basically TeachFX is software, but it's also like a reflection process, so you would record your class, it analyzes what, how the class flows, how much wait time did you give as a teacher? How much student talk time versus teachers' talk, talk time, the academic language that's used by the teacher in a word cloud, the academic language that's used by the students. So when we thought about this, we thought, well, this is a good pilot we can use with our coaches to really reflect on how we're teaching with our students. How do we allow students to have more voice in class? I was just talking to Isabella about our French class, and it sounds like there's a lot of voice in that class, and that's kind of what we want to encourage, that kind of, that kind of thing. So that's where the project came from. There'll be five voluntary sessions, and then we're going to use it to train our coaches, and they'll be able to use it with our teachers. The license is unlimited, so any teacher could try it, but there'll be formal training for teachers that want to explore, and we're excited about it.
Thank you. Thank you. We, we had something like this before, where we were trained as teachers and we on the same areas, and then we watched each other, and we monitored each other, so I'm familiar with what it is.
Any other discussion or comments?
Okay, so this is for item N, teach FX to provide professional develop, professional learning software support and consultation services. Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries for one. And then this moves us to item O. Is there any public comment on item O? Okay, can I have a motion to approve consent item O?
So move.
Thank you. I'll second it. Member Perry, can you lead us in the discussion O?
Basically the same as the last one. I just see a lot of need in areas for students directly and I would rather have money spent there.
We're not short on money, so it's just those areas we need to speak of.
There are a lot of items that students need that we are not handling. And I saw your head shaking like I'm not supposed to talk about it now, what those are. So I won't, but they're definitely.
If you could provide a list, that would be, that wouldn't be helpful for us to understand. So I can provide a response because we haven't cut funding to any of programs in fact.
Well, okay. I can go through some, a list of things. I, I think that.
Not right now. It's not on the, it's not on the agenda, so yeah, no, it's on the agenda, so. No, no, would like to hear in writing, that would be great, thank you.
We'd like to, we just have to abide by the Brown Act, which we have to speak about things that are on the agenda. That's what he's saying, so if you provide it in an email, then we could put it on the agenda or discuss it another way.
I want to make a comment on this as a student centered instructional strategy that is widely applicable to many grade levels and many subjects. So it seems like one of the best types of professional development or contracts that we could enter into that impact maybe possibly the largest number of students. So, you know, I think as a district, we need to be cutting edge. We need to be investing in these things. We need to be looking for new technology, looking for new training. And without a financial shortage or crisis or any other funding restrictions, it would be hard not to invest in these things that are brought forward by instructional services. Thank you.
I think it is really valuable, but I don't think it's cutting edge. And yeah, I think people maybe need a review. Maybe some people weren't involved in it, but we did this 20 years ago.
That's a fair, fair point, member Perry. I think cutting edge, I would have played it in and we're already off of that. But maybe time tested might be a better description of O.
I'm always impressed at the contracts that instructional services brings us. They seem very reasonable and it seems like they do a really good job in this area.
And I love the fact that a lot of these come from administrators, teachers, you know, and then they're bringing them forward through their services, right? But they're starting, they're starting from a lower point and bubbling up and if interest. We had the same, we had the same program exactly.
It wasn't exactly, it wasn't called. Be very similar.
Any other comments or discussions?
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion passes carries for one. I remember the next thing we're going to. This brings us to 12B. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards? Wishing to speak to 12B? Thank you. On July 19th, 2021, we had a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the zero series. On August 19th, 2021, policies were brought back for a first reading. The policies listed here are brought forward for a second reading and approval. Can I have a motion and a second to approve?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any discussions? Victoria, can you please conduct a roll call?
Isabella?
Can I abstain?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. We're moving to item 12C. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make comments on the thousand series?
Yes, Sherry Morgan, you're up.
Policies that you're approving tonight. And I think it's really interesting, given the statement that President Norman had just made about asking parrot, member Perry to follow the Brown Act. I'd like to bring you all back to the board meeting that was held on May 27th, when I was making an effort to comment on the consent calendar and multiple instances where I was not allowed to speak. I was blocked and that was confirmed through reviewing the meeting that evening. And I find it very interesting that, that you're taking policy and approving it tonight and having the knowledge and the wherewithal to actually have the authority to approve it when you don't follow your own bylaws. So I think it's really important that perhaps you look at bringing in some training for those members that continually show that they are not representing or not following the Brown Act and not leading by example. The second item on this that you are looking at is policy, pardon me while I get back to where I'm going here. BP 1100 communications with the public. It talks about two way communications, informing your community and letting them know what's going on. Time after time after time throughout the last year and a half, and I know longer, but specifically the last year and a half. You have people that have indicated they have written to you as a board and they get no response. The only one whose name consistently comes up is, is member Perry. As being response, I know I've submitted responses and not, or questions and not gotten any response. So for you, again, for you to pass a policy and instill a policy of which none of you follow, I find it to be hypocritical and also violating the Brown Act. The last item is the political process. And it states very dis clearly that no district funds, services, supplies, or equipment shall be used to urge the support or defeat of any ballot measure or candidate, including any candidate being for election to the board. Remember Kelly, I'm speaking to you directly because of your article that you wrote on October 16th to student news during an election cycle where you referenced 15 different instances where a speaker, myself, spoke before the board. In the last year and a half, you've demonstrated multiple times where you've struggled with the mute button. So clearly someone needs, was probably helping.
That's three.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
Are there any other speakers in the second?
No other speakers.
Any other speakers, thanks, Clerk Osborne. On July 19th, 2021, we held a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the thousand series. On August 19th, 2021, policies were brought back for a first reading. The policies listed are brought forward for a second reading and approval. Fell on board, we must have a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions or comments? Victoria, can you do a roll call, please?
Isabella?
Abstain.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries five zero, we're moving to 12D. Clerk Osborne, are there any speaker cards on the 2003s? No. Thank you, Clerk Osborne. On July 19th, we held a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the 2000 series. On the August 19th, 2021, policies were brought back for the first reading. The policies listed here are brought forward for a second reading and approval. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion or comments?
Can we get a little bit of clarity? I think me and Isabella are a little confused and she's hesta about to vote. We're not exactly sure what exactly we're voting on.
You say that again.
I think me and Isabella are just a little bit confused on what are we, what are we voting on right now? Are you on D or C? D, we just don't really know what that is.
I'm sorry, so it's 12D. It's the second reading approval of board policies in the 2000 series.
What are the board policies in the 2000 theories? They're listed below.
Yeah, they're, they were in the, they're in the agenda, not this agenda.
Oh, in the detail, in the detail, I can't, I can't remember all the stuff.
We'll go through it next time. The agenda with you guys again, we'll review all of where.
Thank you. No worries, sorry. I promise we'll make sure that you guys feel more confident next time.
Isabella?
Yeah, I think we're just going to abstain from the rest of the approval of the series.
Okay. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. This brings us to 12E, second read and approval of board policies in the 3000 series. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public cards?
No.
Thank you. On August 3rd, we held a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the, in the 3000 series. On August 19th, we, policies were brought back for the first reading. The policies listed are brought forward for a second reading and approval. Board policy 3510 green school operations had additional information added to the, at the request of the board. May I have a motion to approve these policies?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or comments before we vote? I see them. Victoria, can you do a roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries five zero, this moves us to 12F. The second reading approval board policies in the 4000 series. Clerk Osborne, are there any comments?
No comment cards.
Thank you. On August 3rd, 2021, we had a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the 4000 series. On August 19th, 21, policies were brought back for the first reading. And this is the second reading of these. May I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jen. I'll second it. Any comments or discussion? Victoria, go ahead.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries five zero, we're moving to 13A on governance. And Jen, we are going to start with, and these are board reports, kind of like, I'm talking to students, kind of like what you guys did at the beginning. These are our reports under governance. Jen, you have the floor.
Okay, I want to be really brief because this is turning into a lengthy meeting. I attended PT Council and basically a lot of time was spent with Dr. Valoria and others on leadership team of making sure that they shared all the information on anything COVID related, any preparation of facilities, any new, the newest guidelines at that time. And also really addressing how those guidelines change and that we expect more changes in those guidelines and that keep everyone up to date. The CCA meeting was this week, College and Career Advantage. And there's, there's a potential lag in funds and the CTEC funds and that, what was, that's unknown at this time. But what was mentioned is it might result in curtailing after school classes, which is the big issue. So they are working with school services and attempting to make sure that it gets on the agenda of state work education, which it, it was supposed to be on. So, and then the other is that they gave enrollment figures and our enrollment is up at Laguna in the classes. And I think it was only three of the programs that were enrollment was up and other, and other schools had declined. And I'm sure that Dee was also there, so I'm sure she can probably add to that. But my other comment is I really encourage you to submit that list that you referenced on things that are, that are lacking for students. Because I think that's important. When you have that information, it's important to share it. Thank you.
There has to be a venue to share, though. I don't. Well, I'll have to turn it down. As Jen said, I think we were actually the only high school that had enrollment up and by, by quite a bit, by over 100 students. So that was great. We are going to try to be in on a Zoom meeting in September with the, because of what has happened with the funding there. So we'll be filling out those little, little cards and talking about an item not on the agenda because they will not put it on the agenda until January, which is too late to get the funding we need to get. So unless other funding comes in, emergency funding, we will lose our after school classes or we get a loan from, which is a possibility. Several new courses were started. Sports met advanced sports medicine, pharmacy clerk, educational psychology. There are some great programs going on at the middle school. In fact, one of the middle schools has now six sessions of wood shop. And another one has a couple, another one. I mean, that's one of the things I would like to explore for us. And they're also doing career education in the elementary schools. There's a class in Redlands and one in Cajon Valley. Starting with, and I think Dr. Valoria was able to see a video about this, starting with a story. So starting with language arts and then the students build either robotic characters or they use the 3D machines and setting up labs at elementary schools. So those students can find out jobs that they can do in those ways. So that also looked pretty exciting to me. I wanted to thank Dr. Valoria for, for contacting some of our local physicians. I thought that was great, that was really important. I wondered, I know, I thought we had said in August, we were going to talk about transportation. That would be agendized, but it wasn't. And I, you know, I don't know if it, if it will at some time. I also attended.
You didn't request that to be on the agenda. You need an email and request to.
No, you had told me it would be in August. I requested it.
Oh, because, because that's what we did was the board policy on transportation.
I understood it was, and I asked for it to be an agenda item and was told we would bring it up in August. I, I misunderstood that you meant bring it up in August as a policy. I meant bring it up in August as an agenda item.
The only, I don't know if we're allowed to be in discussion on sports.
My confusion was the fact that we brought the policy forward, which is what I thought your request was for discussion.
No, my request, no. So sorry for that misunderstanding.
The policy would have to reflect the changes that you're requesting. So when we had the meeting around, when we talked about transportation, was that we'd have to talk about it as a policy. But then you weren't at the, at the policy meeting in the workshop.
But in our LAAs, we talk about every student being able to get to school. That that obviously, how are we going to educate them if they don't get to school? We've, you know, I've brought this up many times and I, I've heard from a lot of parents about this issue.
Okay, I'm on the line talking about reports because I don't think I can talk about our reports.
Okay.
But, but you can't, if you'll email me, we'll find a time to put that on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, then I attended the Orange County Equity Coalition, NGBTQ plus students right work, rights workshop, which was fascinating with attorneys from the ACLU, NCLR, OCC. And every case they talked about districts lost. But the, one of the, the. wonderful things that came about with one of the districts from Arcadia that lost, the superintendent then kind of got cha- got changed and became a big advocate for making sure things were done right for LGBTQ students. There was also a student from Irvine that spoke to their school board and was very compelling and got them to make some changes in their policies for those students. It was a little bit, a little bit frightening from the standpoint of being a teacher and not maybe doing something wrong that you didn't know was wrong if you don't have quite a bit of training in this area. So something to think of for the future. That's it.
Go ahead, member Kelly, before yours?
I spent most of my time trying to figure out what was happening with COVID and children and I couldn't find any data that was really worthwhile. I'd also like to compliment the team that put together this room for the board meeting. I think this is the best board meeting that I have been at in the best location. And I think you've done just a superb job.
That's okay, thanks. I have four, four updates. This is my first in-person board meeting, so I echo your sentiments. Dr. Kelly, lovely to see everybody. The four things that I've worked on since our last regular board meeting, one is really diving deep into the research on CDC and CDPH. I appreciate my fellow board members and everybody else kind of going through that with me because I do think that's our responsibility to look at that data frequently and in-depth. And it is very confusing. So I worked on that. I also worked on the modifications to the green school operations policy, board policy 3510 with Mr. Dixon. So I appreciate that. I did attend some of the virtual back-to-school nights at Thurston and a little bit at one of the elementary schools to check in and see how those were going. They were lovely. I especially appreciated the video prepared on the advisement period, the new one for Thurston. That gave me a very good understanding of what, what that goal and the vision is from that leadership over there. And then lastly, today I listened to a webcast, a live webcast with Dr. Fauci on COVID and kids. And what I learned in that webcast is that vaccination seems to be our way out of this pandemic. Thank you.
Was that the one through the Atlantic? Okay, I listened to one through the Atlantic, okay. First of all, happy new year to our Jewish families. Second, congratulations to the student board reps. And then, and thank you to everyone who applied for the role. I'm excited to hear about future negotiations and where that goes. And I'm appreciative of all the employees, all of you for setting this up, all the employees for setting up all of their rooms and getting school going and getting a routine for our families and our students of, of rhythm of, of normalcy. And it must have been absolutely exhausting. I'm hoping the three-day weekend gave a little bit of a reprieve. And that is all I have, which brings us to 13B, which is superintendent report on governance.
None tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Run out of energy, sorry.
Thank you. So that brings us to 14A, the next regular meeting. Business meeting will be held in person at Thurston Mills School Library on September 23rd. I moved to join this meeting and want to know if anyone will second me.
Second.
Thank you, Jen. And as a reminder, BD 9200, when we adjourned to the board, the board is no longer seated and we have no additional authority, individual authority until we're seated again. Victoria, can you do a roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin? Isabella? You want to go home?
Yes.